When I say continue, because Dr. Warner has already kind of preemptively sent us some things to look through and think about. To have Dr. Taylor make recommendations and the board to discuss advisory committee recommendations.
We have a motion by Ms. Randall, second by Dr. Chase, any discussion? All in favor?
Right.
I? All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to our first information item. Student conduct policy slash regulations and implementation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First up, Dr. Jones has a presentation on our student code of conduct and the application of our student code of conduct. Then we'll go from there after his presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello.
I'll preface this by saying that this is also something we covered with principals and assistant principals during our Summer Leadership Academy.
Okay.
And you know that student code of conduct is a, it's a policy document that provides guidance. And it provides guidance on how we manage student behavior. So we try to title this, you know, practical approach, because that's what's intended. I think that's what your intention has been, when you approve code of conduct. So Missy, we go to the next slide. So the main thing is that the student code of conduct provides parameters for managing student behavior. The ultimate goal is changing student behavior. So we know that, you know, positive discipline, you know, impacts those who are learning in that classroom. We know that, we witnessed that largely as a result of what we've been through the past couple of years. Missy, go to the next slide. So part of what we did when we met with principals is we revisited some things that are actually in the code of conduct. And, you know, you're very familiar with school principal having responsibility and authority. And the key word here is reasonable judgment. There are parameters that enable us to make decisions that are best for students in terms of managing student behavior. One other piece, go to the next slide. One of the pieces in there is that ultimately, we always want to partner with families. When we're working with a child, it's a partnership. And so parents do bear a tremendous responsibility when it comes to their student behavior at school. And so what we know that when a student's really struggling, we want to ensure that we're engaging that parent to help us address student behavior. And so one of the things that we, I will acknowledge that others may, that we really need to do so, this is a sample of. So how do you know how to behave at school? And I'll use the kindergarten example. In elementary schools, we really, we teach kids how to do everything in elementary school, right? Often, as we go through, we're not as, we're not as explicit about this.
Centrally, yeah.
And you know that, Ms. Randall.
Yeah.
So one of the things that we asked our schools to do this year is to really be very explicit about the expectations and set across the school, particularly in this area. Classroom, cafeteria, restroom. And this is a matrix of what our schools are developing, but these should be posted in classrooms, in the hallway, in the cafeteria. So that students know and can, and could, you know, immediately look at what they're supposed to do in terms of expectations. We do that with our own children, we're very explicit with our own children. We ought to do that when we have large enough children at school. So this is an expectation that is to set for schools for this year.
Dr. Jones, do you want us to hold questions until you finish?
If you don't mind.
Okay.
I'm just going to, what slide number is that, number five?
This is...
Five.
Five.
Okay, thank you.
So go to the next slide. So again, the recommendation for schools this year, you know, intensively and intentionally fighting and teaching expectations. It's a process, not a curriculum. And it is a paradigm, it's a little bit of a paradigm shift, you know, question is, I think the fundamental question in public education is, does change behavior? And that's a question, probably, there's no real answer to it. I would rather hear relationship, change behavior. So, you know, just to establish a school-wide team to really focus on it, develop the matrix. Clearly, just extremely important, like staff managers and what major, clearly management. Everything is this. If I'm, if, as the event, that's a, that's a little bit of a problem. You want teachers to have some control over managing their classroom. And then, you know, the more challenging behaviors, you certainly want to get them to do this stuff. And this is what's, but there are a lot of things, and it looks like they got truncated a little bit, but there are a lot of things that are, so we have levels of responses and interventions. And you'll see that they're fairly broad. The level two, and you'll always see in each of these, you will see, you know, some focus on affecting parents and so. Go to the next one, yes. I have a pause here. So if we're, we might use practices. So not one or the other, and that, our community might be a little bit confused about that for the past year. But both of them, that we want to do. Restorative justice is really a strategy to help these students understand the impact you have on the community, including this parent. And so, of course, the level four is a little more serious effect. With this one, anytime we're looking at any type of suspension, in-school or out-of-school suspension, we expect that we reach out to parents. Now, one of the things that we were adding to our team process is what, the overnight. And I'm going to explain, you want me to explain what that is?
I know.
You know what it is?
Yeah.
So no, it is, Missy misbehaves in a fairly serious way on a Monday. End of the day, you know, Missy, you send you home on a parent, and you can't come back to school until Monday. So no rights really to try to urge the parent to come in right away till we can address that. Once into two, we want to change behavior. So the tool we just have is leverage in our, in our tool.
And it still carries all the same things as a suspension where they can't come to a game or...
To a game or any...
Activity or...
Activity, right. And again, the intent is to be very simple, create this urgency about the behavior. And of course, this is the level five suspension, which, you know, typically at this point, you know, we're, we have these bug right involved perhaps. Because this, these are very serious topics. Hopefully, we don't see many of these. If we leverage all those other tools, we should, you know, minimize the extent to which we see this. Next slide. So again, a reminder of what the expectations are for this year. That's the five, the human expectations for students. Let's study our data. Here's what we know about what happens in a school. There are transition periods, it's typically where you're going to have problems. You go to lunch, you go in the bathroom, you go on the class. Typically, when you have students moving, there are more students, there may be some conflict. When students are in small groups in classrooms, you typically don't have any problems. So we really ought to pay attention to that kind of data in school. And then we should, you know, we should at least, we should monitor that on a continual basis, you know, at school. So just kind of, you know, this is the closure. We have to reset it, being very clear about what they are. We do suspend students, may not have done it in the last couple of years as we've accustomed to, but we do, we do suspend students. We should leverage that as a tool, but we should never do that without partnering. So that community, we see it overnight in there. Just reemphasizing that restorative justice is a tool. This is a little, maybe... And then we have to talk, and so, and bus, bus is, really needs to know that riding a bus is indeed a problem. So... I think this is a lot. So just kind of a review. It provides guidance to principals to be consistent. And we are having conversations, like I know, I was in a conversation with Kim Austin, an elementary principal today. We talked about consistency across schools. So we're being very intentional about having those conversations across schools. And then the last, last bullet is, you know, what we know is just good practice, a partnership between schools, parents, students. So more questions?
Thanks, questions?
Well, I just want to know how you wanted, I mean, I have questions about that, but I also have a lot on the actual policies themselves as they're here, so tell me how.
Why don't, why don't we take the questions on the presentation and then we'll go to the policy?
Perfect.
Because this is still fresh, Missy.
Yep. I think my, where I struggle, because I agree with handle as much in the classroom as we can.
That was slide thirteen.
But I feel like both, I feel like when I say everybody in that classroom, the teachers don't feel like they have that authority. And then the students don't feel like the teachers have that authority. And, you know, back in the day, we used to live in this wait till your father get home kind of world where we didn't want to be in trouble outside of our classroom because then we got in trouble twice, right? But right now, they're kind of like, can't do anything, nothing's going to happen. And I don't know how we create that kind of culture shift in our schools. But not only the kids believe it, but the teachers believe it. That they can and do control what's going on in their classroom. And a student can't just go home and have mommy call or go to the office and, you know, have somebody there, you know, renege on whatever the teacher's doing.
So that's why that person was so important.
Yeah.
That has to be, you know, we talked about school-wide teams. Most, most of the folks that are supervising students in schools are teachers. So we have to have, that has to be, there has to be some agreement about what we're going to deal with in the classroom and what's going to be dealt with, dealt with administratively. And the way we, the way we address that is by being real clear about discipline matrices. You know, what is a behavior that results in administration being involved, and what isn't? And when we get that kind of buy-in, from your example, then that's when teachers will feel more supported with the whole student behavior.
So I guess mine is about, you know, the town hall that we had a couple of weeks ago was focused on this or whatever. And, you know, thankfully for the folks that showed up, the parents, teachers, whatever, we all have the same mindset, I think, correctly, if I'm wrong. The issue is, I mean, there's a multi-layered issue here. Administration is equally at fault as parental interruptions in the discipline cycle. But teachers also not feeling empowered at the classroom level to do it. And everybody was kind of on the same page with that. Now, we've got new teachers that are coming in that don't, already, already don't have the experience about implementing the discipline or the tools or whatever we have. Some of the stuff, especially as I was reading it, and I, I think my comments will maybe reflect that. But I feel like the confusion really too is that this is the student code of conduct and the teachers don't spend a lot of time with it, right? It's not a document that they carry around with them because it's the student code of conduct. So for them, it's not so easy just to go page by page, right? It's like, hey, you're in trouble for this. My next thought wouldn't be to go to the student code of conduct to figure out how to handle it, right? I would, I, I wouldn't know where to go if it's not in, I'm, I'm very big on physical toolbox. It's like actually give them a box that has all of these things.
Well, that's, that's what this is. So, so we have to be intentional about talking about what's in the student code of conduct. And the way we do that, again, is we are very clear about what we expect using those matrices as the, the way we communicate what the expectation is. That has, that has to be, that involves teachers and administrators in doing it.
And helping them understand. Like, I almost feel like we need to pull those charts out and just give it to them and like make sure they get those, those level charts. Right? Like, because to me, I wouldn't even know, like, at first I was reading them as a one-to-one, right? Like, I was like, if you do this, then this is your, like, because it's in columns like that, and I was like, oh, wait, what, how, huh? I didn't realize, I didn't realize that it was like, hey, this is like, there's a lot of stuff in here.
I'm going to use one of our principals, one of our former principals, rather as an example. Jim Stumpf. You go to Jim Stumpf's orientation?
Very good.
Guess what?
You know.
Expectations will be very clear. And that's, that's how you begin to build that relationship, not only with your, with your faculty, but also with your...
Well, I'm going to look forward to seeing that. I think that's...
When Jim Stumpf was still there, I would encourage you to go to his...
I just want to piggyback on that. When you go to one school, it may be crystal clear. But when you go to another school, because we've got thirty-one schools, and that, our schools have their own culture, their own identities. But there's not the same, I would say, up until now, I don't think there's been the same level of expectations. And, and part of that, it's, it's not because of the, the administrators, but because of the, the culture of the school. And, you know, the, the climate, there's, there's all kinds of factors. But how do we make sure that the same expectations are going to be across the board? And, and, because it's a culture change to do that. You know, for all of our schools, even between, you know, the levels, elementary, middle, and high, obviously, the infractions are going to be different. But there should, that, that level should be the same, and it needs to be in place and supported, and to a certain extent enforced. So what are we going to do to empower the administrators to be in that position? They can in turn empower the teachers to be able to hopefully manage this behavior. Because we know post-COVID, it's even more challenging.
So we see that's exactly why we focused on this in the Summer Leadership Academy.
I'm glad.
And that's exactly why the, the school leadership, the folks in this room have, you know, we, we have accepted expectation of schools that have a school improvement plan. So they have some goals, but part of that expectation is what's your discipline matrix? So these folks are asking, show me your discipline matrix as we begin to open school year. And, and talk to me about how you communicate this to your staff as well as to...
So the, the plan is to have it the same across the board, whether in the north or south or central or wherever?
That's the intent.
Same expectation, because that's not what I've seen over the years. And not, not that necessarily one's better than the other, some may be more effective. But it's, it's, it's really inequitable to our students and our teachers to, to have a different standard, you know, for that expectation.
Madam, Madam Chair, if I just, I just had one piece of commentary to this is that we, we're, we spend a lot of time talking about twenty percent of a much larger, really domain of, of a conversation in terms of student conduct. And this is a classic Pareto principle eighty-twenty rule where we spend twenty percent focused on, or eighty percent of our time focused on twenty percent of our concerns. And what, what happens in the classroom is, is really a, a bigger part of this, which is not as directly reflected in the student code of conduct. Because a, a lot of the, the consequences that a teacher might have as part of their classroom exercise or their classroom activity is very much related to the practice of teaching. And it does take practice to get good at classroom management. Every single licensed teacher in the Commonwealth has to have had a class in classroom management. But there are varying degrees of success in how that's...
They're like, so what? So what, what are we doing to make them effective?
So this, this is, I think, the renewed focus on this is so healthy on so many different levels. Because we definitely have worked with school leadership and administration to, to find some commonalities on how we address the issues that come out of the classroom. Another layer to this where we really could invest a lot more time and energy is in the professional development that we offer to classroom teachers about how they handle the other eighty percent of issues. And, and that is probably the biggest boulder to move. I think we have tremendous faith in the consistency between school administrators and trying to implement things consistently when they're all on the same page. It's a, it's a little bit harder with a faculty of a hundred, because every time we introduce a new teacher or a new administrator, we're introducing a new variable to a complex situation where some things may be loose versus some things may be tight, depending on what that teacher is. And I think that that's maybe the area where, where we have the most growth to do from this point moving forward. I, I feel very confident that the board has a, a good policy that's consistent with the laws of the Commonwealth and reflects the board's intent. But the implementation of that policy is multifaceted. Where we spent a lion's share of our energy this summer with school leadership was making sure that school principals, assistant principals were all on the same page with expectations. Utilizing a lot of the tools that Dr. Jones has, has outlined. But the next step to this, and this is probably the one that's going to require the most energy, is what does that look like in the classroom? And how do we create that continuity for the everyday things that happen in the classroom? And when does a minor thing become so consistently abusive in classrooms that it detracts from the learning of others? That it needs to elevate to the next level? And how do we work with teachers to be better stewards of calling parents on a more regular basis and involving them in the decision-making? That's probably the next step of this process.
Those of us on the side of the room who have an opportunity to speak, I think Ms. Randall has to hand up first.
My question is, in, you talked about how you've impacted your leadership. So my next question is, is it going to be new teachers and current teachers that will get this lesson from their administrative team? Or is it a countywide? I'm, I'm just curious, how does the lessons learned by the administrations roll down to the teachers? And how will they receive it? Will it be in their individual schools or as a countywide lesson? That's my first one. One of the other slides, I don't know if I saw it, I saw it earlier. It said that students will be, all students will be progress monitored three times a year. How's that done?
Well, that's, I mean, that, I'm not sure if it said, um, you know, that's, so we, you know, we're doing, we're doing that academically, because we have, we have screeners to literacy and math.
But is that, is that...
That's the academic side of it.
Right.
But we also should be doing that by looking at your discipline data. Should be looking at your discipline data at least three times a year.
Okay, okay. I, I just didn't know.
And what's, and you know, and what that means is, we should know where, where are the infractions in classrooms or in cafeteria? Are they doing transition period? If we're not doing that, we're not really monitoring.
Okay.
Our student data.
Okay, and then about the teacher training, the new teachers, current teachers, and just so you know, Miss Haley, Maya Guy is on.
So, I'll put, when it comes to that, that's, again, that's...
After Dr. Chase.
So that's part of the onboarding, as, again, we've, we've done this for all of our school leaders.
Right.
Try to create consistency in our schools. The expert thing is, again, school leadership is going to monitor this progress, the school improvement process and working with schools as we begin school year. So, you know, we're asking folks to post their school improvement plans, and then we're looking, we're taking a deep dive and looking at what they've done to roll this out across our schools.
So all teachers will be given it in their schools or as a countywide lesson?
In their schools.
In their schools, okay, thank you. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so, you know, in meeting with principals, I just want to say how impressed I've been with their discussions about dealing with discipline and, and some of the things they've been talking with their teachers about. I do agree, the big challenge is we have so many brand-new teachers or teachers with only one or two years of experience. And one of those years was kind of remote, that, that it's, it's going to be a big, it's going to be a lot of work. I, I wonder a little bit about, you talked about transition times and how difficult transition times are. And so I, I have to say, I'm a little, you know, wondering how the hour school-wide lunch at the high school is going to work and how the additional middle school flex time is going to work where we've had people moving through the building and more opportunity for, for discipline issues. So I, I'm a little concerned about that. And then I did want to say something about schools being the same. In chatting with principals, very clear that things can be very different from school to school. So, you know, I talked with one principal who had nineteen students arrive at the end of last school year. None of them spoke English and none of them had ever gone to school.
Oh.
So I, I think we do need to be understanding of the fact that things are not going to be the same at every school because we don't have the same population at every school. And just to, to kind of be aware of that.
So I'll give you one example. Last year, I, the Grader, so, Ms. Butler, we met with all of our middle school principals and assistant principals, and we gave scenarios. So here's a discipline scenario. And we had them talk among the schools how they dealt with those scenarios, and we felt a great degree of inconsistency. We did that to get away from the inconsistency. So it's that kind of professional learning and that kind of time with principals that helps us have more consistency, you know, across, across schools. As far as the transition periods, I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit policy here. Supervision means everyone's out. So if everyone's out, you have supervision. And what we know is, you know, the oldest rule of discipline is proximity. So we have to be, everybody's got all hands on that all the time, especially during transition periods. Dr. Nichols may want to speak to a one-hour lunch, but that one-hour lunch requires everybody's out, everybody supervised. Often, what happens at a large school is you expect the admin, Jim may be able to speak to this, you expect the administrators just to supervise. Well, that, that, everybody's got to be out.
Let's see, Dr. Chase, did you have anything?
Um, Ms. Guy. Yeah, and then I, I just, the, the last thing is just, you know, one of the things I covered was a little bit of concern about teachers not enforcing the rules to the same degree. So, you know, some teachers, you know, the, the biggest way to handle discipline is to have a really engaging classroom.
Right.
And that's a lot of work. And so when teachers reward students by allowing them to listen to their music on their smartphone during class, but another teacher follows the rule, which is you're not supposed to have your smartphone out during class, it kind of undermines things for that other teacher. So it was a little concerning to hear that that's still going on.
Well, I'm, Ms. Guy, before we come to you, I just want to follow up with Dr. Chase. I understand what you're saying about different populations in schools, but are you suggesting that the expectations should be different for all schools?
Nope, absolutely not, nope.
Okay. So I just want to make sure it's clear.
How, how, how it will look may differ from school to school. And, and the, well, it may be difficult for a principal to manage what we're asking if you have a school with a much more challenging population. I mean, you can have the expectations, but if, if at one school your teachers are able to handle it, it's a relatively low level of, of issues happening, that's going to be one thing. If you're in a school where it's a lot more, it may be more challenging, that's all I'm saying.
And then I would expect in a case like that, that that administrator would go to his or her supervisor and say, I need some help or I need assistance or, you know, what, what can you, can you do to help me? But I, we, we all agree the expectations should be the same.
Yep.
You know, and, and, well, I'll, I'll follow up on this after. Ms., Ms. Guy, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm listening and actually some of my comments or questions, I guess, were already said. So I think I'm on the same page as some board members, so I'm good, thank you.
Okay, well, if you, if anything comes up, you know, just kind of chime in. We can't...
Yeah, no problem.
... screen, so, um, we, we're glad you're here. All right, we're going to start round two.
Uh, well, this is more, well, two things I want to talk about, going back to what Dr. Chase was talking about, the different sort of same piece. So really then the quandary is, is finding consistency with the discipline across the board while allowing some of that autonomy to stay in place, right? That means that, and the way I see that is that those levels of consequences that are in there, you know, there's so many different options of them to take, for them to take, I should say. Hopefully, if that, if those consequences, for lack of a better word, are, you know, robust enough, then, then it helps with a little bit of that, right? Because, because then the teacher could go in there and say, okay, they take this option for that student. Which leads me to the number one thing, which someone that I've come to very much respect and admire over the course of the last six months mentioned at our, at our town hall. You know, it would be nice to see a database of infractions, sort of the number of times these kids are coming across these infractions. And then drop-down menus for everything, right? Like, if we could create this, it could be something that parents could access, principals, so that questions are easy, they'd be much more manageable at the classroom level too. And I'd like to see this board sort of empower that to happen, a place where the teachers could go in at the end of the day, give them a little bit of time to think about what that consequence would be, right? Because I, I don't know what their schedule would be like. But I think we should start a discussion about how do we really track what this is happening? How do we design the easiest thing for our teachers, because nobody wants to give them order? Nobody's looking to make them have to go, and I've spoken to a few principals about this too, and they love the idea, they're so happy this conversation is happening. But no one wants the board, no one wants the teacher to be like, okay, you got in trouble, hold on, put my iPad out and go into our database and get that out right now, you know? But, but in it, it might be infinitely easier for the teacher, she's got the fallback, she's got this mechanism right at her fingertips to say, okay, let me drop down, these are my consequences, eh, it wasn't so bad, let's talk to him about this. I think a lot of these teachers just don't know that, and we're database-oriented, cloud-level society, so I think we should consider that. Paradigm shifts, they're fun, right?
Change.
It, it's very much like rebranding, you know, your entire thought process, which isn't easy. The number one thing that I keep hearing from everyone too though is the amount of excuses and justifications that were made because of COVID. So how do we stop that from continuing forward? That's, that's my biggest question, right? Like, yes, we did all go through that, and now it's time for us to move on. And we... And we've got many, many, many issues for our kids that we have to piece back together. And so I'd like to see us stop that conversation at excuse. Yeah, the excuse, right, not even conversation, stop that excuse right in its tracks. Yes, COVID hurt us, that's behind us, the world's in front of us. So we need to put that out there, I think, as our rebrand.
That's exactly what we're doing.
Beautiful, all right, that's all I had to say.
Ms. Stigman? I just wanted to throw this out there, I look at, um, agendas for neighboring county school boards, um, see what they're talking about. I noticed that Spotsy actually gives their board a discipline report every month. I don't know what's on it, I don't know what it looks like, I just know that it's on there as an attachment. Of course, click on it or see it, I saw the screenshot, but that, like, I'd be curious to see what, like, how they do that, what they're compiling and whether or not they find that helpful and, um, like, how that happens. And if there's a way we can make a similar reporting style work for us with similar, you know, the information that we feel is, you know, relevant to what we're looking for.
I, I think, um, Ms. Hall, you could contact their clerk and see, of course, it would have to be redacted, we could see if we could get.
Yeah, I just want, literally I want to see like headings, no empty box, like the, the form they fill out every month but with no data in it and.
And it's a good point too, and one of the conversations I have to kind of capitalize on that is, this isn't just about, we're not just talking about negatives either, right? It would also, you know, speaking to, um, one of the principals about, I can't even track positive things really, like, you know what I mean? Like, it's really hard to keep track of, yeah, each of the kids, so what if, I mean, what if it wasn't a discipline database, right? What if it was something that included everything where, because really ultimately what you're saying is we're looking to make sure that we don't punish, that we, we encourage, that's our job.
Part of strategy is recognizing good behavior.
Correct, and so it might be good to actually have that because, hey, maybe it prints out a certificate right away to go home with the kid, right? Like, because you guys, I prefer M and M's and lollipops. Well, you do, we forget big kids sometimes need that as well, you know? So I, I just want to make sure that, like, on that note, like, getting a good report as well to read might be nice to see too, right? Because it is easy, Thomas, you're right, to go to that twenty percent and be like, look at this discipline report. Everything is falling apart. And it's very easy to become a little chicken bullish, but.
But I also feel like, once we see, people feel like there's so much, right? But maybe when we see numbers and we're looking at it grand, you know, big picture, like, yeah, we don't, we want less, we always want less. We want zeros across the board on discipline issues. When we think about the number of things we see on a scale of thirty thousand students, maybe it's not so scary, I guess, to see it when it's all laid out like that.
But it's a town hall, it's a town hall, we had a number of teachers there, it was, it was very good interaction. And thank you, Ms. Hall, for cheering that and setting it up. Um, one thing the teachers mentioned was though, that sometimes their administrators discourage them from taking actions that would be reported because they didn't want to have something come up on the report. So that's something we're going to have to be cognizant of. We are not getting a report just to see, you know, how many got it checked off, and we, we, we want to see the true picture. So it's, it's something that this whole thing with, with, it comes back down to the teachers and, you know, we're saying eighty to ninety percent needs to be managed at the classroom, but those teachers need to know that they have the tools to do that and that they're going to be backed up. Because the teachers that were at the town hall were saying, you know, I send the child to the principal, they just get sent back to me. Nothing happens and then it's, it's just more disruption. So somehow that message needs to get to the principals. From the principals to the teachers, things are going to change. Now, that's not in all the schools, but in some of the schools, this is going to be, you know, a, a big change. It's a good change, but it's going to be big, but those teachers need to know, the, the veteran teachers and of course the new teachers, they won't know any better because they're just, you know, coming in. Um, I, 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 I just think this is really going to be important because we heard a lot of, I will call discouraged um, teachers speaking.
And parents.
Um, and parents, but, but because, because they felt that they had no control and that they weren't being backed up and that there wasn't anything to be done and that they, they couldn't even report a discipline because somebody didn't want to get that mark. That's why I'm talking about the, the uniformity, you know, of enforcement. I'm not saying, you know, all the cookie cutters are going to be the same, but the, but there is a certain expectation across the board. I mean, if we can, if we can do this, I think it's, I think it's great, but it, but it's got to come down. Those teachers have to know and feel that they are supported in taking the actions.
And as a parent, I always felt like, you know, the board has these rules, why aren't we, like, where, where are they, right? Like, and now as a board member, I think we would all feel the same, like, we're passing a policy and people are just kind of like, you know, run and beat it. So like, I want teachers to be like, school board, this is school board policy. Like, to feel empowered by the fact that we did this for the greater them, all of them, the community, and to use that.
But I, I think it's, I mean, I, I, I'm agreeing with you all. At the same time, I think it's important for us to realize that sometimes people don't really know what's going on with discipline. Right? Like, I can remember my child getting, um, punched and going in and meeting with the principal and saying, okay, well, so what's happening? And the principal said, I can't share with you.
Sure.
What's happening with this other student because I, I just, it's not, it's not going to be shared with you.
The laws.
And so, and so, you know, I mean, I, I spoke with one principal who talked about they have in-school suspension kind of thing, like, they know that if they suspend this child, this child will be at home and will not do any of their work and basically be watching television all day. And so they have in-school suspension when, where you come in and there's a room. Yes, they'll see you come off the bus, but after that, you're in a room being, doing your work all day and you are indeed experiencing discipline, um, but the rest of the school might not realize it. So there's that component to it as well, so just.
Ms. Randall, we'll, and then we'll come back to you. So we've talked about, um, classroom and school, but the other part, and, um, Dr. Jones had it up there too, is bus. And we've extended this bus from being a fifty-five passenger classroom to a seventy-seven passenger classroom. And just to make it even more fun, all seventy-seven kids are behind you and you're facing this way on our ro- windy roads and long routes. So my, you know, I know that bus drivers, when they have conflicts, can sometimes ask for tapes to be pulled. But some principals are reluctant to help them and others are okay to help them and it, that becomes an inequity piece as well. But, um, my, you know, you mentioned it up there and I'm, and this is where I'm fully supportive because I really feel like it's pulling parents in to help us with the discipline, is remembering that, like you said, the bus is a privilege. And for students to be pushed off the bus sooner rather than later, A, for lesson learned quickly, but more than that, for safety. Like I said, we have extended that classroom from being a fifty-five to a seventy-seven. And, you know, let's just add the Houdini part where she's got to, or he's got to face this way and all the kids are behind with higher seats and what have you. And I just feel like sooner off is better for the safety of all seventy-seven. But also, uh, to, to remind parents and students of the privilege to ride the respect that is needed as well as behavior for safety, for all safety.
My, yeah, my respect.
Okay.
Are you finished, Ms.?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Guy?
I'm agreeing a hundred percent with, um, what was just said. I just wanted to clarify just maybe newbie, or maybe I don't remember what happened. Uh, when Ms. Randall is saying we extended it from fifty-five to seventy-seven, was that with buying bigger buses? Or ju- I, you know, I'm just curious.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Curious how that went, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
And I, I'm just kind of thinking back too and say, you know, I still think bus monitors are the best option.
Because they face them.
Yeah, well, and that's allowable now, right? Wasn't that a thing before?
It's, it's, it's the finance.
It's not voluntary.
Okay, um, can I, I'm going to, I'm going to make a question. Um, Dr. Jones, we talked earlier, we mentioned the buses and clearly, i- if we're going to be doing this rebranding, putting this new, uh, policy into effect, how are we going to make sure that that is uniformly enforced on the buses? Now, this is not the bus drivers, this is the, this is the, the, the support they're getting from the administrators. And again, I'm not criticizing the administrators, but up to this date, there has been a huge, um, difference of, of support for bus drivers, depending on where you are and, um, in, in, in not intentionally not supporting them, but that the bus drivers surely have felt that they were not supported and that nothing would get done. At some schools it was, some schools it wasn't. Um, they, and, and they also mentioned how long it took between when the infraction occurred and when some action was taken, there was no, you know, immediate, um, response. So are we, do you have a plan in place that we can tie in the, the transportation portion at the beginning of the school year and how is that being communicated to transportation?
So, so the same, the same kind of effort to try to be real clear about expectations has to happen with, with, with our bus drivers. And I know, um, um, and part of that's our communication with principals in terms of working with bus drivers, setting expectations on them and.
Yeah, it's an extension of their staff.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
So I just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
But he didn't answer.
Yeah, I know, but, but I'm, can you include these two in on your answer, my two questions in on your answer? Because I feel like they're all the same. I don't want you to forget her questions either, but I thought maybe we just answer them all at once. And the first one really is, is, I mean, what can we send an expectation that our own parents, the bus rules have changed? And that they need to be aware that suspensions are imminent if behavior doesn't change. And on top of that. Well, right, so if we have, well, I was going to say, if we haven't done that, when do we, when would we do that? But then also, as you're saying, like, you know, this is going to be the biggest shift that hopefully will, will change the mood inside the schools because some of these kids come off the bu- the bus amped, so.
I think your point is, we, yeah, we need to be very explicit about setting expectations and what we communicate to parents about the privilege of riding the bus.
Right.
And so those are all efforts that we're undertaking.
But we can do that in a positive light, so we, we want, we want to, you know, maintain, you know, this, this calm environment, you know, on the buses as, as well as in school. But if the kids are all wired up before they even get to school, then that makes it harder, I would think, for them to sit down and, and, and start dealing with the schools. But, but it needs to go out before the school year starts, or, or at least at the back to school night. Um, i- if we don't do it and have the consistency, it's, it's not going to be effective. And I think the bus drivers would be very grateful for this and it may even help us in retaining bus drivers. It may cut down on some of that ten percent absentee every day, you know, that, that, that we have. So i- if we don't have a plan right now, we probably don't have time to discuss it anyway because we've got a couple other items. If we could get that maybe in one of the memos, the Friday memos, is, is to how we're, how we're going about it. Um, this, this is, this is good news, this.
We're making changes.
Yeah.
I, um.
We, we, let's spend about five more minutes on this, six more minutes and then move on because we've got some other important things to, to talk about. Oh, well, let's, let's, let's finish on the presentation and we can, we'll spend some time on that.
My quick question, this came up at the, the, uh, town hall as well. To get to my kids' grades and parent view over here, I have to do, like, approve all the codes of conduct, student code of conduct, all that stuff. Is there a way to put that on the bus app, the bus code of conduct? So that parents are essentially required to at least acknowledge it's there, we can only hope that they read it, um, in order to get to their route. If it's not there, I, we're walkers, we have forbidden buses, so.
Well, I wonder even more so to get them to read it, this would be so obnoxious.
I know you're asking.
Well, I know, but I'm saying, like, you know, like, after, like, there are certain apps out there that you have to, like, you read a paragraph and you have to initial that paragraph.
Well, you have to scroll down, you have to scroll down.
Well, wait, so how many user terms of agreement have you been like, uh-huh? Which means you acknowledge it can happen, because who knew that there was a bus code of conduct?
Okay, any other comments on the, um, presentation?
I'm up again.
Bummer. Okay, Ms. Guy, did you have any final comments on the presentation? Okay, now, Ms. Hall said has a number of, of, are these comments or questions on the?
They are, but they're on the document itself, we're not, I mean.
Do you want to put them in writing and?
I, let me do that, because this is going to be an interesting time.
And, and then you can share.
A few of them, I have a bunch.
Responses with the whole board, that would be good, but we won't be holding the meeting, but you can send it with all of us, okay, great. All right, so that brings me to, thank you for that, that presentation. I'm, I'm excited, is everybody? I mean, this is, this is going to be a first. And I think this is, like you say, retention for drivers, but this is also going to be helpful with retention for teachers. I know, and this is, and if we can do it in the positive sense, not that we're going to be tracking this discipline. We, we want to make the school environment better for everyone and to do that, we're going to get a better handle. We're going to manage these disruptions that we've had in the past, this is how we're going to do it. It's not, you know, make sure your child doesn't do this, this is to benefit all the kids. But I also appreciate in the tools, how many instances where you are involving families to be part of the solution in the problem that may develop. I just, I appreciate that. And, and I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing from teachers that they now feel that they're going to get support when they are trying to manage their classroom, because that's exactly what we didn't hear and Dr. Taylor was there. I don't think there was one teacher that said they felt fully supported in maintaining discipline, you know, in the classroom. So this is, this is fantastic, we just got to get the word out. All right, well, that leads us to the, uh, COVID nineteen.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Guy?
I apologize, but when you were talking about, um, well, just with the last discussion that we were talking about, um, and I might have missed it because I came on late, but, um, there needs to be something else about, um, you know, just dealing with parents and parents and expectations. Like, I know we're being very clear with our children on the expectations that we're setting for their behavior in the bus and in the schools, but that expectation needs to be, I think, placed clearly in front of parents as well because oftentimes they are the reason why we have these behavioral issues. That's all I was, I wanted to say, that's it.
Agreed, agreed.
Yes, and, and, and we did touch on that some, and I think that's what Ms. Ms. Signum was saying. Let's have a special code of conduct for the, for the bus, that the parents have to acknowledge, um, that these are the rules and, and these. That these are the possible consequences.
Like they did in the sports a long time ago.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. All right, so lessons learned, that's past tense, learned, learned from COVID nineteen and most effective strategies to address, that's present tense, learning laws.
So, pretty same way, based on what we just finished talking about. So, we know, um, I mean, that first, that first, uh, title, anytime, anyplace, any path, any pace learning. We've learned nothing else from COVID, we learned that, we have to be very agile. But we also learned that if you don't have health and safety, you don't have learning. So that, that always has to bear a number one bar. Again, just being very accessible and flexible, uh, something we learned. And of course, the big question else, how do we recover? Uh, and, and, and that requires a number of things. Um, that would be high-yield literacy and numeracy strategies. So the intensity of the strategy is what I would suggest, because we were both taught progress monitoring students. How do we, what do you want to know as a parent, how's my kid doing?
Yep.
So we should be able to answer that question. And then personalizing interventions, we'd be very surgical, I'll use the word, use the word surgical when it comes to an intervention. Which means we have to know how they're doing and constantly monitor. Of course, you saw the student's recommendation too, I don't want to overlook that one, this, this presentation or the other. Um, we know this, there's no roadmap, you know, we, we really kind of figured this out as we went along and hopefully going forward. We have a little more expertise in terms of.
This is the latest, this is the latest of more than one, I must have missed.
No, no, you're saying that we have none because we.
No, but of the latest pandemic.
Well, there's monkeypox now.
That would be the latest.
Yeah, we just got to be realistic there.
Don't you spread rumors.
We should be a little quicker. So, we're a great place as a school division because we're developing a strategic point. So we can, we can be very surgical in terms of how we personalize learning, you know, how we, how we adopt those foundational skills. So, so, so that's one of the beauties of being kind of where we are right now and developing. And again, we know, we, you know, if, if we have another pandemic, or should we say when? We know mitigation strategies are an important part of our, in our toolbox in terms of how we manage health and safety, we know that. Uh, that, and that is something we have to continue to be very diligent about. We know that learning must continue regardless of what the issue is. We know we have to continue, create a way to continue learning. And we know that the well-being of our staff, students and communities matters. Another lesson we learned, we knew that prior to the pandemic, but we're really more focused on that against what this, what this was. Why, so then you see, you know, being like, go back, you see the issue of food insecurity, how we address that as a. Why, so then you see, you know, being like, go back, you see the issue of boots insecurity, how we address that as a strategy, that's something we should always think about. Um, again, this kind of just mentions the issue of flexibility, again, that that's an important part. This piece here about the blueprint courses, you know, we we had a meeting this morning with our academic programs, we really talked about. That's how we're as, we, here's a, here's a blueprint of what kids out of now will be able to do. How do we deliver that in a way that's that's adaptive and flexible? And we've learned how to progress monitor better, we've learned how to sign Christmas, the church better. And we, again, I'll just mention the idea of how we leverage the structural tools and being surgical about how we monitor kids. Um, so, you know, just in kind of closing this up, we know that in-person learning is gold standard. If we we learned that, and we, going into this year, we have more and more students that are gonna be in person, we know, particularly for our youngest learner. But there are students that can learn virtually. So again, that speaks to that agility. We know technology is a, is a huge uh tool that we can leverage in terms of flexibility. Let's just think, I don't know, we went one to one, we lost the learning management system. And quite honestly, we're a little behind. We should, you know, ideally, we would have done that years ago. Uh, I think, I think, uh, you'll see more presentations on how we leverage technology coming forward. Um, and again, I just, this question, this is the, this is the fundamental question about what, how many, is my child learning? So, just kind of in summary, um, prior to focus on health, blended learning, how your strategies, the real emphasis on growth. So is my child getting better? Cowabunga movement has kind of forced us to, you made it or you did, we really should focus on growth. Just again, summary slide, anytime, anyplace, any path, any place. Went through that fairly quickly, I know you're running out of a little bit of time, but you probably have questions.
Comments, questions, Dr. Chase, let's start over there.
So, um, I I know, I, when is the S R money gone? So when is the money from the additional pairs who are providing this um tutoring and stuff for our students in elementary school? When is that money finished?
So we have um all the pairs for all of this year, and then next year, we have half of the pairs, as we kind of phase them out, so it's for next year.
Zero, twenty, twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four. We have half the pairs. Okay, because I was just not clear. And then what about summer stuff? Are we doing summer stuff next year as well?
We will always have some kind of summer program. Um, will it be as robust as it was the last couple of years? Not likely.
Next year, is it going to be a little more robust, or will we not be using any S R money for the summer program next year?
Um, it's to be determined as to whether or not we'll use S R money for summer school next year, but we will always have a summer program. And it will definitely be robust, but whether it's financed by S R.
I I just asked, because I had heard from from a couple of principals that um that not in the elementary, but well, in maybe some of the elementary too, that the summer program has been just very sort of generic. And so if if you have a student who's really struggling just in math, for them to come do this very general summer program is perhaps not as effective a strategy as say, let's focus this student on math, let's focus this student on English, or whatever it is that they need to to get better at. So I don't know if we're doing a summer program next year and whether we wanna look at trying to make that a little more um, a little more uh directed. And that's it.
Yeah, well, we try to focus on the enrichment as well as try intervention in the past couple of summer.
Ms. Randall. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, uh, one of the things that I'm happy to see, you know, the things that we've learned. Um, but one of the things, when I see um enrichment and intervention, I just can't help but think that that was really well done in the elementary, it was done in the middle school, but it really was not done at the high school level. Um, there were, because we were trying on a smaller hour schedule to get content information, but the opportunity for enrichment and intervention, especially intervention, wasn't there, and it kind of, you know, ki- you think about it in since twenty twenty, we've graduated around six thousand students. And if any of those six thousand students needed extra support, it was really hard to come by.
Well, one of the things we did, I know we we offered more opportunity for credit, new credit, as well as the uh recovery credit courses at the high school level, as part of, not, you know, not the most robust strategy, but as a strategy, so.
Yeah.
I think we've had more students.
Cause like even then.
Initial credit classes and recovery credit classes the past two summers than we have for a long time.
Cause like even when my son was here in twenty twenty, um, and got cut short, and you know, how to, Algebra II is a semester long. He, uh, his new teacher, doing the best that she could, sweetest girl, um, did not, you know, come, she was already behind. And there was no teaching, no anything of Algebra II for the rest of that year. And he needed to take SATs, but thankfully, they changed the rules on those. And one of the things to be successful on SAT is Algebra II. And at the end, when there was two weeks left of school, he got an email saying, oh, by the way, get on um Edgenuity and finish your class. So there was no teacher support to help him with Algebra II, he struggled. And, you know, it was like, do it once, failed it, okay, do it again, change it, you know, it's like, it's not learning. Like, there was never a pencil that went to a piece of paper that, you know, would help him with math, so. And he's won, and I know that, like I said, everyone kind of finished that way, but just even knowing that there wasn't the tutoring and there wasn't the, you know, the opportunities like this year's high school schedule is gonna allow more intervention and enrichment opportunity for these kids. But to remember that as part of our lesson, that we need, if you're providing it in the elementary and you're providing it in the middle, need to figure out how to do it in high.
So we weren't, at that time, we also weren't doing screeners K twelve.
Right.
You know, so we are doing screeners K twelve.
Right.
To really kind of monitor where students are.
Right.
Were any of our high school classes offered, like, in-person traditional classroom setting this summer?
Father, no.
Cause our our daughter took uh Algebra this summer, and while it was on Edgenuity, um, it, yeah, I feel the same. However, there, she did have to go in to take her tests if she needed, there were like office hours, I guess, where for a number of hours every day or whatever, she could go to a place and sit with a teacher and get that help, I'm not sure if it was like that before.
No, because when my son did it, it was, he got to sit in cosmetology in a business class.
And this is for summer, this is, that, um, you know, it's not super convenient, it's not, it wasn't like at our neighborhood school, but it was there. And we provided transportation from like satellite locations, so I think that was an improvement, of course, so I wish there was in person, yes, especially for, because our daughter took math too, so, yes, but it's way better than what I expected, given that I've heard those stories.
And let's just be honest, we dealt with a little bit of burnout this summer.
Oh, yeah, I'm I'm grateful they have a whole summer, I'm so grateful.
So hopefully, this long summer, uh, this one of the long summers we've had last year, so, gave us an opportunity to kind of recharge.
Yeah. Okay, Ms. Halsted, um, has some comments, questions?
So this is a tough one for me, because I spent close to two decades planning for a pandemic um and writing all the plans, and I offered some support in the beginning to the previous administrator, who did not want my help. I mean, I offered it pro bono, I offered ways to keep kids in person safely, because I have plans at my house on a ter- on two terabytes worth of information for avoiding school closures. Um, so I have a very hard time objectively looking at this information and 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 I'm stuck between being angry about it and having so much stress for you.
And you know?
You was, well, us collectively, but so much stress that so much could have been avoided. And it wasn't, and I wouldn't know that if I hadn't spent so much time in the trenches writing the plans. So I'm throwing that out there now, just so as we go forward, that we never ever lose sight of the fact that there are plans that exist. They're out there, they were relatively good, not great, they were good. And even if they needed a little dusting off, because they sat on the shelf for so long, they would have helped with a lot of this. So I hope that this school system picks those plans up, takes a look at them, and begins to just make sure that those things are at the ready to go forward. Heaven forbid this ever happens again. So I do have two questions in addressing some of the behavior shortfalls that we're seeing at the younger levels with you know, literacy and numeracy and um sort of tracking over, because there's no real baseline data for those kids, right? Cause they're just getting started. So I don't actually know what the question is, but how does that, how is that going to look, or do you have an idea of how that looks moving forward? Because it is hard, some of these kids are just not getting that understanding of the classroom setup. So, so I'm asking how we, how we track. Now, we're looking at putting pieces back together, right, for kids that were already in school when this happened. But we also have kids that are still in the first parts of their school years, right, like one, two, they were in school pandemic-ish. We have behavioral issues associated with that, and we have new kids coming in. So there's about a two or three year flex there as well, where there's gonna be a huge behavioral difference or maturity difference. I I'm looking at the social emotional piece primarily, but I'm, I wanna make sure that that remains in the forefront, but how do, how do you go about?
So I think it's, I think a couple of things, I think it's one reason we're doing all the academic screeners, but we're also, we're doing those, you remember the presentation you guys were on? On social emotional, that's going, we we're continuing to do that for exactly the reason you just mentioned.
Okay.
Because we, just because we know it matters.
Yeah, I mean, I I just, because sometimes I feel like we're gonna have fourth graders going in that kind of behaviorally or emotionally second grade. And that's not their fault, it's to no fault of their own, it's just that's.
So, so social emotional lessons are are incorporated into regular lessons, and this is an 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 important part of the growing up part of being in school. Um, this has been a part of the middle school curriculum since time began, fortunately. Uh, but it's something that we definitely need to rely on as we move forward, because it it is such a significant gap. Uh, the key to unlocking knowledge is pretty simple, it's background knowledge. And you build on background knowledge at different layers as you go through schooling. And it it really is like building a house, and and you build that foundation in elementary school. You build the uh infrastructure, the the guts of your house, the pipes and the wires and the framing in middle school. And in high school, you start to uh create ornaments that help form the the people that we wanna live next to as citizens in our community. Um, so so much of this does need to happen earlier on, so that we can have a a more significant impact. The good news is, is that the speed in which our students can get back on track is much, much quicker and much, much faster the younger they are.
Okay.
So there there are some significant advantages uh that we're working with with some of our younger students uh who have had that interruption to their regular in-person learning event um and are now back in school full time. I have tremendous concern if we are not able uh to have in-person instruction moving forward for that group of kids. Uh, that's why Dr. Jones in his presentation uh pointed at in-person instruction as being the gold standard because of the socialization component. Uh, not just the academic components and our ability to to um to be with with our kids um and helping to guide them. Uh, we have tremendous concerns about our students who were in the second half of their high school experience that left us, because the gap that they have is gonna be significant moving forward. Um, as time will tell, that that is not our burden at this time. Excuse me.
It is yours.
I totally get it.
Yes.
Ms. Guy, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I do.
I don't mean to pick on you, I just wanna make sure you have an opportunity, because we're all chatting away here.
I have everybody's cell phone, if I get passed over, I'm texting.
Yeah, you know not to do anything with me, because I turned my, pretty much turned it off, I got it here, but.
I got Missy on speed dial, so.
Okay, Missy, if Ms. Guy raises her hand um electronically, just give us a a in-person one. Okay, Ms. Randall.
Okay, and going back to similarly here, um, but I didn't see it up here, and I have spoken with you about it too. Is the um executive function piece, because and of course, then that is where those six thousand kids that have graduated and that sort of thing, and I know you and I've talked about it, and you have some ideas, but I just want it shared out. Um, is that, uh, you know, part of what we had seen last year that made it feel like two years for some of our teachers of course, was the concurrent learning, but also the, or teaching, whichever way you, whichever seat you sit in. Um, but also the executive function piece where kids just didn't know how to do school. And, um, you know, I remember from when I was teaching at Point that I had, if I had young ninth grade boys that, you know, and I, you know, the July, August birthday, do you hold them, do you send them? September, you know, I held mine, but, um, you know, you'd sometimes see like a little pocket toy or something, and you're like dude, you're ninth grade, that we don't do that. And so it's just kind of learning how to do school. There's the academic, the social emotional, but just learning how to do school. Turning assignments in means you don't do it the morning of, five minutes before, and then, you know, you, that there's a process that goes into getting things done, how to take notes, how to study for a test, and, you know, all of these things are have just been kind of pulled back, scaled back, because we were trying to get content upfront and safety and health and things like that. So I just, I'm hoping as a lesson learned, that we need to remember you know, uh, if we start, stop, or whatever, that we have to remember to go, to teach kids how to do school again. When they've had.
May I just add one thing that came back to this, which I think is really important, and and such a great segue into superintendent comments this evening about um our transition day.
Good, thank you.
Kindergarten, sixth grade and ninth grade students, it's a scary thing to come to a new school. It's a scary thing for parents, it's a scary thing for our students, it can even be a scary thing for some of our teachers. If you're new to a space, there's new expectations, new friends, a new layout, a whole new learning style. Um, and having a non-instructional day for our transition grades is something that we're trying new this year. Um, we're, we're grateful that the community is along with us for this wild ride and for us to give this a try. Um, we're very optimistic in our, in our principal's estimation as well, that that this will be a success, because we do need to teach our kids how to do school. And we especially need to teach them how to, how school works when you transition levels. And this is something that we're going to have to spend a lot of time in, not just on one day, but throughout the entire time that our kids are in school, but to have that initial start and to have that initial opportunity to lay the foundation in a positive way, um, really is a huge advantage for us. And will give us a jumpstart in helping to reteach some of those executive functions.
So, do you have, let me just, Dr. Chase, did you have anything, because we're gonna wrap this up, so we can get to our last.
I just wanted to ask, uh, Mr. Randall, if you mind, if you minded sharing that story about the five hundred percent increase or whatever.
Oh.
Just, just as a matter of, giving you an idea of how important it really is.
You know, I I I like to get things in, and sometimes I don't get it in one, so I get the little rock, I get the stone, I get the brick. But then, when I sat, you know, I have my own struggles with my own son, with his issues in high school and what have you too, my youngest. But when Sarah was talking about how disappointed she was with some of the end results of the class that she taught. And then when we were doing strategic planning, and one of the things that we were, she she mentioned also as a focus was the executive function. I went and took my son to freshman orientation, and I asked them. I said, what was, um, you know, what was after COVID like for you at the university level? And one of the things they said to me was that the level of students that required student success center, student writing center, math, um, career, uh, um, just even social emotional help, all of that increased at their university by over five hundred percent in one year. And so if that's what it's increasing at a university level, when we just graduated these kids out, like I said, not always giving at the high school level, not always the support they needed, um, it just goes to show, you know, we're moving things along, but we got to. It just goes to show, you know, we're moving things along, but we got to remember at the other end, you know, similarly seeing what they're getting at the university level with these kids.
Showing up for work.
Show, yeah, or not.
And, and I think it all ties back into the beginning conversation we had about discipline and teaching rules and limits and boundaries and all that other stuff with everything going straight from school. Some of them aren't in college, don't have access to those resources. They're just in the workforce and they don't have a sense of, I mean, it's really kind of sad to see. Not sad they're coming to me, but like I have kids in my work that come to me because they're just, they just don't understand why they can't not show up for work one day because they don't feel well.
Come in late.
And or come in late because they were up all night before playing video games. No one really ever held them accountable in those timeframes. So, so I mean, as we look at these things, I think some of the things up and coming are going to be hard, are going to, and they might be met with a lot of resistance, but at the end of the day, like to watch some of these kids flounder. Can't write, they can't, I mean, it's, it's hard, it's hard to watch. Any way we have a back door, they, like if they were really struggling, could they not come back to go to school? But like, I mean, this might be the last place they had somebody they connected with. So it might just be nice to consider a line, I don't know what you call that, lifeline.
Help line.
Help line or something, but just especially within those two years of graduating, you know what I mean? Just, just to offer that support as a community and as a county because it was, it was such a tremendously, you know, tumultuous time. So it's just a thought, that's all.
That's something you should bring up to your, your health advisor committee.
Oh, good idea.
They could, that's something they could look into possibly. Partnership with Germana or the Reprohanic Area Community Services Board or something like that, the county, your partnerships. I, I just have one more question, but I don't want an answer now, I'd ask for it, you know, perhaps in a memo or, or at some point. There's so much here that we've learned and there's so much we want to do. But my question is, and I wrote this down, is what tools or training are we providing or making available to our teachers to equip them to address the needs of each student in their classes? So that's, you know, to me, this all is coming down to the teacher. And I mean, we're learning these lessons, but who's it going to, you know, rest on? And that's the teachers. Even if it's just identifying the issues and then, you know, looking out for help. So I'd like to know what tools we're going to be making available. Because I think the more support we can show for our teachers and, and make them feel that they're not stranded in that classroom, the, the more successful we will be in, in, in coming out of this quagmire that we've been in. So, all right, Ms. Guy, any final comments before we move on to our next discussion?
No, thank you, I'm good.
Okay, all right, well, we're, we're doing great on the time, we've got about 17 minutes. If we want to go later, we can go into our dinnertime. But the, the next item is the school board's status as a member of the Virginia School Boards Association. And Ms. Halsted and the Sigma wanted to discuss this, we've got some information here. So I don't know if you, do you want?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. The, the board had requested some information about its membership in the Virginia School Boards Association. And we had pulled, this was a great process for us because it, it did give us an opportunity to revisit our membership. So we had pulled together an analysis for the board's review along with some supporting documents that the board had requested about some changes that were, were being made at the Virginia School Boards Association and their membership in the National School Boards Association. The synthesis document in board docs is labeled BSBA Membership Analysis. And we detail our costs as well as our membership dues. And then the change from membership of BSBA in the National School Boards Association to COSBA, which is the Consortium of State School Boards Associations. And there's a handful of attachments tied to that. But this was something that the board wanted to discuss and we've prepared this information for your discussion.
Do you want to start? I was gonna say, I would, I would be happy to. I joined this board thinking it was individualized memberships that I could choose and you could choose and we could individually choose. And I don't use this service, I get school board education through an alternate organization. I work in policy, so I get, like I literally write these things for a living. Then I learned when I had my little reminder in the calendar to send the reminder into the office that I did not want to renew because it runs on a school year calendar and we're elected on calendar year terms. So I had to wait until spring. I learned that it was a group thing. And then, of course, at this point, we already know that the SBA is leaving NSBA. So I know a lot of people had a lot of issues politically or, you know, politically might be the wrong word. With the way NSBA has made some decisions and chosen to, to handle some issues. And BSBA separated from them in the fall. That's all well and good. The only upside to being part of NSBA, NSBA is a nonprofit. They're not, their tax returns are fully transparent. We can see who works there, we know how much they're getting paid, we know who their contribution, where their money comes from, we know how they spend their money. BSBA is not a nonprofit. Their tax returns are completely, completely not filed publicly. I don't know what we're buying into. I've had some experience with BSBA, can't say it's good or bad. Okay, now we're finding, we're founding this, we as the state of Virginia as one of the founding members of this COSBA. COSBA is brand new, just formed at the end of 2021 in response to pulling out of NSBA with all, you know, essentially all the other states that also pulled out of NSBA. That's great, doing my homework there because I want to know where we're spending our money. There's no staff listed on COSBA, they're too new to file a tax return. I, like, we're paying the same amount, we don't know what we're getting. I'm looking at the budget, we spend about $30,000 a year. I just don't know how they intend to do that money, what we're buying, how we know we're going to get the same product from an organization that essentially doesn't exist yet, especially if we're paying the same amount, you know? And I feel like when we compete for other purchases, I know this is a small potatoes kind of purchase, but we have, we expect a lot more information from other companies we give our money to. And it just doesn't sit well with me. I mean, $150,000 every five years, it's a new playground. You know, like, I, I just wanted to be on record that I, I do not like the lack of transparency and not knowing who's running what we're, what we're paying for. Because I don't want to jump out of the frying pan and into the fire. So that's where I sit.
Okay, any other?
Well, since I was the second one on this, so I, I think for me, it's a matter of, I mean, I, it kind of ties into that, but it's just a matter of trust, right? Like, we have a lot of issues now surrounding associations and secondary agendas behind their primary mission statement. And so I agree with Maureen that, you know, I read a lot of their stuff that came out in the very beginning. We're supposed to have these non-partisan organizations, I didn't find their stuff to be very non-partisan as I was reading it. I, I emailed a few people a couple of times to say, hey, can I get this, that or the other thing? And I never got any of that, I just got the same thing over and over again. So I was like, okay, well, maybe it's not an individual, and then I would read the stuff that came out. So, again, it was high anxiety times there. Maybe they had a focus, maybe they had a mission, but I wasn't convinced it was for the best. For the best, let's just put a period there and end that sentence. Now, I agree with Maureen, I, I'd be willing to give this COSBA a shot per se, but who are they, how do they work? It's probably unfair to judge associations at this point, but I'm going to say one thing. I think it's clear that plenty of parents have been stabbed by the, stabbed in the back lately by associations that have ill-managed mission statements, ill-conceived notions, I don't know. But I feel that this is taxpayer money. This isn't like, hey, I'm paying a fee or a due or whatever. And so as a result of using taxpayer dollar into this, then it really should cover the gamut of the population that's paying into that. And I'm not necessarily sure that it does. I didn't get a lot from their, their first training day, we stopped.
I talked to Dr. Taylor.
Well, right, I mean, honestly, that's the truth, we've talked about that, like we got more out of Dr. Taylor's orientation than we did from the BSBA.
I told you that when you got the orientation, this is so much better than what you're going to get.
She did say that, she did say that. But, but anyway, for me, I think it's just a matter of trust. They've not done anything that has wowed me one way or the other that I feel that the, you know, it's like going to a really expensive restaurant, you feel like, oh my God, this food's going to be so amazing, I can't wait to eat because it's a $50 steak and it comes out and it's like this little tiny casino chip size something. And maybe you can cut into it, maybe you can't, but you're still stuck with the bill, it doesn't matter how it tasted. And so, so that's how I feel. I think unfortunately, we have a, we have this struggle now in, in campaigns, right? I feel like this is what these associations do now, they campaign. And they campaign very aggressively in ways that I find to be very divisive. And so that's, that's my issue. If I could see two sides of a coin coming from each of these places. Like when I was in school for my masters, right? We, one of the big things we had to do was take a health issue that was super hard to deal with, right? And argue pro and con. So if you were for it, you had to argue against it, if you were against it, I mean, you had to argue both sides. Wow, that's hard, really hard to maintain that neutrality to be able to say, because like you feel so strongly about something, right? But we had to do it. And so there I am, standing up against an issue that I believe fully in and I'm arguing against it and it hurt my feelings. But, but what a lesson to learn about, about the beauty of compromise and neutrality. And hey, if I've missed it, show it to me, but I haven't seen it, so.
And then, I don't know if it's appropriate to bring up, we have a digital public comment. There was a concern from a constituent who believed we were considering this as an agenda topic because, but they think that the SBA is there to hold us accountable. And I just want to address that's not the role of the SBA, this is a professional development organization that provides services to us, they don't oversee us, they don't govern us, they can't sanction us or anything like that. We are responsible to, you know, our community. And by, you know, the community is essentially who provides us the oversight and the state, of course, by our bylaws and guidelines. But, yeah.
Dr. Chase.
Sure. So I did not have Dr. Taylor's orientation. So for me, for the SBA, it was really important in terms of getting orientation. You know, one of the things I learned right off the bat going to the, and you all weren't able to go to the annual conference in November. But for me, it was very educational, like learning that I could not edit my Facebook page, that that was against the law. I learned that at the SBA. That if I remove people's comments from my Facebook page as an elected official, that I could be sued. And so that was a useful thing for me to learn from them. Every year, there's a legal section during that conference where they review all of the cases that have, all the cases pertinent to education that have come up. And I wouldn't know about that otherwise, and that's a really important thing to understand for, you know, as, as a school board member. It's an opportunity to meet other people from other school boards who give you sort of information about what's going on in their school district, what kinds of problems they had, what kinds of things along that line. The superintendent evaluation that Liza did that we were all so pleased with came from going to the SBA and learning how to do that. So there are a lot of things along those lines that I don't know where we, where we would get that training or where we would get that information. And, and maybe you do, I don't know. But I'm not aware of others because I haven't gone hunting for it. So for me, I, I have felt like it has been a valuable resource for.
Ms. Randall.
I, I echo what Sarah said, I feel like you guys gave it a one-shot at the SBA new training and haven't really got a true taste. I mean, you may have asked questions or you may have read things or, and you participated in something that was sort of redundant because, like you said, Dr. Taylor knocked it out of the park. But I would also say that it's a, a harsh, you know, judgment on them having not gone to the SBA convention, like there's a totally different thing. The other thing is, is that, you know, if, if there's something that is said that is against maybe what you feel politically, what you feel fundamentally or whatever, that's okay. Because like you just said, seeing both sides of the coin. Because you don't want to hear educational information that keeps you in a silo, like challenge you, you know, present something that you vehemently want to vomit on and say, no way. I did say vomit. But I just think that it's okay to, you know, I sat in the class and that's where I learned the idea of what Spatsy was doing and shared it with Dr. Taylor about, can we just do something like this to help our high school kids? It came from sitting in a class at the SBA. The VSBA past president, I totally disagreed with him on so many things. But when I got stuck on something, I was able to pick him up the phone and call him and say, I know you're the VSBA president, but I'm going to ask you this. And he's like, I don't want to talk to you on the phone, get on Zoom. And so we did, and, you know, I got a lot out of sitting with him. The Loudoun County Chairman of the School Board, bless her heart, is, is one of the people that got me into doing this. Because we were on PTA, she was state PTA president, and said, have you ever thought? And I was like, oh, God, no. And, yeah, and 10 years later, here I am. So I'm just saying though, there, the people that you meet, the avenues, the information, the instruction and the fact that there are, is every district in Virginia is participating in it. Whether they're, wherever their belief system is, it's nice to hear something and say, holy crap. I remember sitting in a conference on budget and the county behind me was like, every year, they 100% fund our budget. I'm like, how? You know, but if I didn't sit on a conference like that, I wouldn't hear that. I mean, I couldn't participate virtually in something. And virtually isn't nearly, it's not the gold standard as in person. So going to this thing in person, you guys had one event, I'm telling you, don't say no to November. It's a very good opportunity. And if nothing else, let it be your litmus test versus your one-time training, your email or non-email responses. And just, you know, just realize that you're going to meet all kinds of people for all different kinds of reasons. And it's even fun watching Dr. Taylor and Dr. Jones there. Because who they run into, superintendents or principals or whatever, and you run and they introduce you to them. Now you're expanding yourself into a superintendent and you're like, let me ask you, is it normal for a superintendent to? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, we don't do that.
Never mind, this is a terrible idea.
But I'm just saying.
That conference just got canceled.
Oh, we are, okay. Well, but I'm just saying though, it's, it's a nice opportunity to extend. And I can understand from, you know, this COSBA thing, well, it's kind of early to be considering that they would have everything out there for us to see and to judge and what have you. And honestly, I did NSBA one time for one conference on a particular item. I was kind of eh about it, but so I, but I did, you know, there are plenty of times where, you know, Sarah's contacted legal or I've contacted, when we were talking about a program that they did, I've taken their programs by myself online. Some are okay, some are not. And I contacted him and said, I need to talk to this author, can you get me in touch with them? And they did. And then we had him come talk to us. So I mean, there's.
With NSBA is that usually when there's a national umbrella, that kind of.
Yeah, like national PTA, right?
Right, like creates the framework for what's under them. And since there's so much transparency at the national level, you're kind of like, okay, well, the VSBA is buying into them. This is what they say they're doing.
Yeah.
This is where their money's going, so there's some level of trust. But now all that transparency is gone. And that's not saying I'm agreeing or disagreeing with NSBA or anything they say or do. I'm just saying from a purely financial standpoint, and especially if they're not going to be providing us the same level of service because they're literally getting themselves off the ground, they haven't been around for like decades, like NSBA. Just paying for the same thing.
But everything we got was, but everything we got was the SBA. I mean, there may have been a protection under NSBA, but everything that we have received is just the SBA. So I don't think we're missing something because NSBA was a choice thing. It wasn't like, hey, you guys all come too, kind of thing. It was out there, we wanted to do it, you could do it. But generally speaking, you weren't in the same proximity, the same rules, the same, um, things that are, you know, holding us in Virginia as what we get when we go to VSB.
So wait, can I ask a question? Cause maybe I'm confused. So VSB, are we paying them money and then we're paying COSPA money too?
No, they're not, no.
It assumes VSB has changed.
Part of the COSPA, but I, I just want to make a point. As long as I've been on the board, I've never had any contact with the NSBA. But I have had contact with the VSB. And I pick up the phone and, and any of us as board members or, and, and the staff can pick up the phone and call the staff at the VSB. I've called because I've had some legal questions or I've had some policy questions. And I just wanted, you know, to, to, to talk to them to find out, you know, what are the parameters, you know, from, from a legal standpoint. Now, they don't always give you a real precise answer, but they'll, they'll, they'll keep you in the, in, in the ballpark. But to me, it, it's not as relevant, whether it's NSBA or COSPA or whatever. My value of the organization is with the, the Virginia School Board Association. And as far as I know, that hasn't changed. And really, if you look at that cost, I was surprised and Dr. Taylor put it together for the past five years. Look, it hasn't really gone up much. I mean, considering, you know, how much this dozen eggs costs now, my gosh, the store is like three dollars. I remember when they're fifty-nine cents, you know, at Walmart. But it's, it's crazy that they are continuing to offer these, these services. There's a lot of continuity there. I know Gina, um, I don't know her last name, I should.
Patterson.
Patterson, she's been there literally decades, decades. And she's there, there is a resource. So I would suggest that you consider, you know, looking into what they have to offer. I don't, I don't at all look at this as a political issue. This is, to me, it's, it's, it's not political. It's what does this organization provide to Stafford County Public Schools, not just the school board? Because I feel personally enriched by having this opportunity for professional development, whether it be at the conference or the, the seminars that they offer. And, you know, a lot of the webinars are free.
And even Missy.
That's, that's a benefit.
Watching Missy bounce around at that.
Yeah. Uh, Missy gets to go to the clerks.
Watching Missy bounce around in the room, she is a happy girl when she's in there. She's so funny.
Right. But, but let me go one back to the orientation. When I sat in on part of the day of your orientation from Dr. Taylor, I was like, oh my gosh. Yeah, I never got any. I didn't go, I got none, but I came in by myself. Um, I said, what'd you gotten? You could, you, y'all could go and teach the, the orientation at the VSB based on what you got. So you, you really can't, you can't compare that. Um, let me, let me go to Ms. Guy and see if she has anything. And then looking back to you to wrap up. And, and if Mrs. Sigmund wants to say any final thing, we can. And then I think we need to break for our dinner. Ms. Guy?
Hi, yeah. Um, I actually called them, uh, just to confirm that they were nonpartisan. Um, just to confirm that they would answer, you know, any questions that we had, you know, some stuff maybe you can't find online, trying to find out what their, you know, what their real advocacy is. And, um, they, they were incredibly forthcoming and, and forthright. They were awesome. I thought the, um, orientation was, was good, actually. I know, um, that, you know, not everyone agreed with me. I thought it was good. Did I think it was as better than what we got from Dr. Taylor? No, Dr. Taylor is an overachiever. Y'all know that, like, he's great. And I think, you know, he tailored it maybe to our personnel, like what he knew he was coming into, and that needs to, like, they're doing a very broad thing. But, and, and also like, that was during the mask time and, and, you know, with all fairness, like Alyssa and, and Marie, you guys were like super busy. Y'all were on your computers at that too. So like there were, I mean, a lot of stuff they did was anecdotal, yeah. But it explained things like how, like how you deal with this, how you deal with that, how you deal with parents. I mean, it, they didn't go deep, but it's because you're drinking from a fire hose. And I think they knew that. And so it was just to give us, um, I guess, a little bit of a stronger footing when we deal with those superficial things, but you're gonna deal with like a thousand of them, you know, maybe your first six months or whatever. Um, but when I look at the calendar and Missy can attest to this, like, there's so many things I wanted to sign up for. I didn't know that, you know, I wasn't gonna have to pay for them, so I hadn't signed up yet because I was trying to save my money. But like, I, I can't wait to go to, um, the thing they have on financing. Cause I just joined that committee and I need to know better on how, you know, how to understand the finances. And I'm gonna get that from them. So, you know, for me, I absolutely want to stay. And, um, I, you know, I don't, I didn't find anything partisan. If, if it's there, y'all pointed out to me and I can call them out with you. That being said, I definitely am, am glad I have them as a resource.
Okay, so we'll, we'll let Ms. Hallstead, Ms. Sigmund wrap it up and then we're gonna get our dinner and we will start the meeting at six thirty. Regardless of when we start the dinner.
I guess just, just as a final note, it did, it did come as a surprise to me, A, how much money it was. Because I hadn't seen really anything beneficial at that point. Totally admitting it's a new run for me. But I also did feel a little bit conflicted by the fact that it's not an individual choice, that you're automatically sort of aligned and affiliated. And that felt weird to me as well because there are certain things that I want to know about an organization before someone puts my name behind them, right? Like I, it's just how I feel. Um, that being said, I do feel, like I said in the beginning, there's just a trust factor for me. I mean, I'm not asking them to prove themselves to me, little Alyssa over here in Hartwood. But, but I stand behind needing to see more before I can say, go VSB.
That's a fair, that's a fair.
Especially because the organization that, that provides the resources that I use is an individually based membership. And I've held off, I held off on asking to join until my air quotes, membership with VSB expired because I assumed it was also an individual membership. Um, and that's essentially where. I mean, this conversation all came from.
Right. I mean, I guess part of the reason it's maybe not individual is like we come back and share all the slides from what it went to with everybody else. So I can see why they're like.
Yeah, stay as group kind of thing. I, I, I think there, there probably shouldn't be any issue with if, if you want to just put on record your desire not to participate as an individual. I mean, if you feel strongly about it, we can, you know, check with not the VSB attorney, but, you know, an independent attorney to confirm that. But if, if that's something you'd like us to explore, we can. Because the board, you know, this is, the board is an entity. It's not any of us individually. It's whoever's on the board.
I would like for you guys to get, be able to give it a try in November versus judge it all from, you know, the new training, maybe from some frustrated calls, maybe email or whatever, and maybe they didn't understand. I would like for it to be given, you know, opportunity for their training in November.
Right. And the, the training that they give in November is not, it's not really the VSB. It's individual school boards. It's independent, um, you know, entities coming in and presenting these training sessions. I went to one, the last one, Ms. Randall and I went to, the one for Chesterfield, where we found out, you know, all the kind of exciting things Chesterfield did with its community participation.
To try to get more community engagement.
I always like to go to the legal just from a professional curiosity to, to learn about, you know, what the cases are. I, I don't practice in that area, but my night job takes me into it.
Yeah.
Um, you know, just to, to learn. And there's, there's, it's an amazing opportunity. And they do video those training and make them available, uh, you know, on, on the, uh, on the website. So if, if, do you want us to explore that, Ms. Sigmund? Okay, so we, we'll, we'll explore that. And, um, you know, that could be for anyone in that. Dr. Taylor, can you, um, follow up on that? And that, that's just to, you know, just be a statement for the record. I mean, I, I think if, if the board, you know, is part of it, it's, it's, it's sort of like any vote we have. If we have, you know, the will of the board, and once that's done, we're, you're, you're either stuck with it or you like it or whatever. But it's, it's just there, kind of like relatives.
Okay, all right. We got twenty minutes.
Dinner time.
To eat, do whatever we need to do outside and be, the board was ready to start at five thirty.
Thank you.
Bye, Mom.
Thank you. Is my coming back?
I can't hear. I can't hear.
Sorry. No, I kind of stepped behind you.
Bye, Susan's mom.
Bye. Thank you, Dr. Jones. That was, that was very, very good.
Very good. I'm good. I'm gonna go with mine.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Guy is electronically present. Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
And Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with one amendment to add as one of our future meetings, a work session on July 26th at 6:00 following the board members serving dinner for our new teachers at Colonial Forge in the library to discuss the strategic plan, our board clerk evaluation, continuing work on our board evaluation, and Dr. Taylor recommendations with board discussion on the advisory committee recommendations.
Okay, and that was a work session?
A work session.
Okay.
What was that, was that being added to the consent agenda?
No, it's just being added to the announcements of the next school board meeting. And thanks, thank you, Dr. Chase, for suggesting we hold those days in abeyance for when we need them.
Yep. And what time does that leave?
6:00.
6:00.
Right, we're gonna, we're invited to help serve a dinner for our new teachers at Colonial Forge and what time does, let's start at 4:30 if you're able to attend. So I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all of them. All right, I'll let Ms. Hall decide who was second on that one, but we clearly have at least one second.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? No? All right, all in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Randall. Any discussion?
I have one question, just in going through it. Can we talk just for a second about the approval of the corrective action plan for the Head Start areas of noncompliance?
Do you want to read that out?
You would have to separate it from.
Separate it out, is that what it has to? I just, I just, is this something we're supposed to, because they're separate, right?
Well, the consent agenda is items that we're approving. In one mass.
In one mass.
Right. If you're not comfortable with it, you can pull that one item. You can, yeah, you can pull it out. The best time to pull it out is prior to the meeting, but we can always pull it out at the meeting. Probably most appropriate time would be when we're approving the agenda to ask it to be moved, but if you, if you want to.
Nope, you can leave it where it is. I just, I had a couple of questions on it, but I'll ask them all.
Discussion. Yeah, we, I mean, yeah, we, why don't, why don't we have a discussion now? If you want to ask your questions, because we're discussing the.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about how, how, because, I mean, some of this is past, right? But some of it is moving forwards. I kind of followed it, but I just had, I need to understand the process behind it because I don't really know a lot about how it works.
She's here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have Ms. Massey, who runs our early childhood programs, to answer any questions about the Head Start.
Hi.
How are you?
I am fine. What can I answer for you?
I just, can you help, can you walk me through the process? Like, you have your audits, I'm assuming every year someone comes in or whatever and they find, and then you have a certain amount of time within which to implement the corrective action that they've assigned to you.
Exactly.
And then what, what, like, I was just looking at the one thing, to be honest with you, it's not that big of a deal, I'm just trying to understand the chart, that's really all. So you have an action step, expected outcome, this is a target date of completion by July 10th. How do you, do you have to update that to them, to this board? Like, how does that work? Tell me about your process.
So, just like you said, we have an audit, it's a five-year grant, so they come two or three times during that five years and do different things. And so they found two major areas of noncompliance that we have to address with a corrective action plan. And so part of that corrective action plan is getting approval of the plan and, you know, from the policy council and then from the school board.
Okay.
And then we have to implement the plan by the date that they do, the drop dead date that they gave us for that.
So that's all assigned by them?
And then they'll come back and they will evaluate, did we meet that plan? And they'll, they're gonna talk to school board members and say, were you part of the process of approving the plan? That kind of thing.
That's all I needed. I just didn't know how this could be. And I just wanted to make sure I understood, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I had.
Any other questions?
Ms. Massey, when's the next meeting of the policy council?
Uh, next week.
Next week? Oh, and Ms. Halsted's not gonna be available next week. But the meeting after that, if you could let us know, I think, it sounds like Ms. Halsted has an interest in the Head Start.
I would love to go.
It is amazing to just, to see this policy council in action. Now, Dr. Warner is our representative on that, so you could go as a.
If you don't mind, I'd love to come and watch.
Well, you can just, yeah, Dr. Warner, well, yeah, you could go and, you could go and, you could go and observe, I mean, any of us could, but I think that clearly it's a learning opportunity and it's amazing, so impressive with the council.
I would love to, and I apologize, I am behind the eight ball on it and catching up, and it's such a well-written report, like.
Oh, thank you.
I'm just very impressed by it, so. I just wanted to make sure.
So maybe for, do you have, do you meet in August?
We have a meeting in August, we have a meeting in September, we have one every month, and your clerk has those dates, and so, yes, we would love anyone to come.
Yeah.
And Dr. Warner is, has been a very faithful member of that group, and we really appreciate her support as well.
Yeah, would love to just hear and make sure I know more about it.
We would love to have you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Hall, if you can just remind us when the, when the August meeting will be, I think, I think that'd be great, and you may be interested, and Ms. Guy may be interested as well, of course, any of us senior board members, you know, are fairly familiar, but I know, I'm just in awe of what that council does.
And in August, you'll get more, they'll get more of an updated policy council and our progress on that plan.
Is it Head Start when there are students there?
Oh, gosh, yes.
To go to the policy council?
Yeah. Well, you can, you can do both.
I would.
Don't they meet during the day?
But I would like to see the meeting as well.
Doesn't the policy council meet during the day?
They meet at 11:30.
Yeah, so there you go, you can, you have a doubleheader. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Massey.
Thanks, guys, that's all.
All right. Any other discussion? No? All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Taylor, any announcements for us?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have several announcements of some administrative appointments as part of the consent agenda and personnel memo, and as I call their name, I'd invite them to come forward and after I'm reading a brief bio, just to say a few words of hello and introduce any guests that they may have in the audience this evening. First, and she was approved at our last board meeting, but, you know, folks take vacation in the summertime, and that's all right. Dr. Shonda Collins Ritchie has joined Stafford as our new Assistant Director of Core Curriculum Support, managing the team that will provide content expertise and support across English, mathematics, science, and social studies at all grade levels. Dr. Collins Ritchie comes to us from Spotsylvania County, where for the last eight years she was the principal at Brock Road Elementary School. As a principal, her school saw five consecutive years of consistent student growth in reading and mathematics, and was recognized by 2000, in 2020, by the Virginia Department of Education for its Continuous Improvement Award. We are so proud to have Dr. Collins Ritchie on our team. She earned her bachelor's degree in English Education from Livingstone College in North Carolina, her master's in educational leadership from George Mason, and her doctorate in educational leadership from Walden University. Welcome, Dr. Collins Ritchie.
Thank you so much. Well, today marks day four for me here in Stafford. I'm very grateful for the warm welcome that I've received from everyone, and I'm very excited to get up to speed and become a part of everything that makes Stafford County great. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Welcome, thank you for joining us.
No stranger to Stafford County is Rachel Novak, and at the June 14th board meeting, Rachel was appointed as the new principal at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. Ms. Novak has worked for the last year as the Assistant Principal at Wide Water Elementary, after three years in the same role at Yowell Elementary School in Culpeper, where she has served as a special education designee and 504 coordinator as well. She provides instructional support to teachers and pairs using multi-tiered systems of support framework, and Ms. Novak began her teaching career in Colonial Beach and then taught and completed her administrative internship in Fredericksburg City. Ms. Novak earned her bachelor's degree in psychology from Robert Morris University and her master's degree in special education from the University of Mary Washington. She completed her endorsement in administration and supervision from Longwood University. Glad to see you, Ms. Novak, and welcome back from vacation.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, and. I am so grateful to each of you for this incredible opportunity. I found a home here in Stafford last year when I joined the Wildcat Den at Wide Water, and I am thrilled to be a part of the Barrett family. On day one, our amazing scholars and staff lined the hallways and threw a full-blown parade, so pretty much the warmest welcome that you could hope for, and I am so excited for all of the adventures that this new year will bring. Thank you.
Nice.
Thank you, Ms. Novak. I'm very pleased to introduce Dr. Deshaun Turner, who will be the new principal at North Stafford High School.
Oh, colors.
And you can tell he belongs to North Nation.
Orange and blue. As a, as a former Wolverine, though, that's the wrong blue.
Okay.
I'm just kidding. No, it changes, you just wait long enough, it'll come back.
We'll have to wait.
Might match the tide, too, you know?
So I'm delighted to share that this is a happy return to school leadership for Dr. Turner, who previously served as the principal of Washington and Lee High School and Washington District Elementary School, both in West Moreland County. In both schools, Dr. Turner oversaw improvements in student achievement, including for students with special needs, as well as our English language learners at those schools, which he helped both schools achieve full accreditation after a long hiatus of not being fully accredited. Dr. Turner comes to us most recently from Arlington County Public Schools, where he was the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. Dr. Turner has also previously served as the Superintendent for Colonial Beach Public Schools and the Director of Administrative Services for King George County Public Schools. He earned his bachelor's degree from Liberty University and a master's degree in educational leadership from American Intercontinental University and a doctorate from North Central University. Welcome to Stafford County, Dr. Turner.
Yay.
Well, I'd like to thank Dr. Taylor and the school board for the opportunity to work at such a wonderful school, and my family now look forward to joining North Nation. So again, thank you so much, okay?
Thank you.
Have fun.
Welcoming back to Stafford County is Siobhan DeGlass. Ms. Siobhan DeGlass, affectionately known as Cece, will come back to Stafford County to become the new Assistant Principal at Mountain View High School. Ms. Glass was a business and marketing teacher for six years at Mountain View, as well as an online learning facilitator before coming an Assistant Principal at James Monroe High School in Fredericksburg two years ago. While at Mountain View, Ms. Glass was the Family and Community Engagement Representative for the school and was a lead teacher within the school's Career and Technical Education Program. As an Assistant Principal in Fredericksburg, she supervised special education programs and focused on positive behavior interventions and supports to address student discipline and conduct matters. Ms. Glass has her bachelor's degree in finance and marketing from Oldham University and a master's in business administration from Strayer University and a master's in educational leadership from Liberty University. Welcome back to Stafford County, Ms. Glass.
I want to thank the school board, Dr. Taylor, my Wildcat family for having me back. I cut my teeth in education at Mountain View, and it's nothing but a pleasure to come back and serve as a leader in a school that I hold so dear to my heart.
Aww.
Yay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, welcome.
We'll have to welcome her at our next meeting. She's out of town, but I did want to announce that Dr. Jacinta Calzada Ameroni is the new Assistant Principal at North Stafford High School, and she'll begin her work with Dr. Turner, and we're thrilled to have her. So, thank you so much, Madam Chair, and that concludes our administrative appointments for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, welcome. We're so excited to have all our new administrators and here to start off a really exciting school year. This is where, we just had a session about post-COVID, we're putting that all behind us, right, Ms. Halsted?
Oh, yeah.
That is the past.
See you later.
Moving forward, and it's, it's great to see new people and, and old people, old-timers coming back, not old people.
Not old people.
What do you say? Returning, returns, but welcome, welcome. Thank you for coming, and we welcome our neighbor from the South as well, as those from the North. That brings us to presentations. We have a Special Education Advisory Committee Report and Recommendation. Dr. Homer.
Hello?
Do you have people with you, Dr. Homer?
Yes, I'm just getting the presentation ready. I'll introduce her here in a second. Want to make sure we're.
Not that we don't want to see you, but we like to see our committee people.
That's what I've been telling her, she's gonna do great.
Oh, of course. We have so much room. I know.
Mouse or clicker, is it a mouse? So just the mouse?
We can take turns.
Yeah, it's just not presenting for some reason. Go out, come back in. Not cooperating.
Don't look at me, I'm like the least qualified to do this electronic work.
It's not, let me click on anything, and there's that. Seen it three times now in the board meetings.
This came out of consent.
What I can use, I can log in. As for review.
But she wouldn't let me ask any of my questions.
But I will say this, we gotta print it. Yep. Improvise, there we go. All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board, Dr. Taylor. It is a privilege and an honor to introduce to you our CAC Chair, Tina Johnson. She's very, very excited to be here tonight, and she will be sharing with you all of the hard work that our committee did this year, as well as a recommendation for you to consider. So I'm gonna hand the mic off to her, and then I'll be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Homer. Good evening, thank you for having me. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Taylor, thank you so much, this is such an honor and a privilege to tell you all about the hard work that our 2022-2023 CAC Committee has done this year and all the wonderful things that we hope to continue to come. As you know, the committee is made up of various stakeholders, including myself as a parent. This year, we actually had students on our committee, which was such a privilege and an honor to have them to come and speak and tell their perspective. And so with that, we have found, after reviewing various different topics, that post-transition, transition and post-grad services and support are what we would like to focus on, and that will be the focus of this presentation for you. And I'm gonna hope that I can click and talk at the same time, you know, it's like the whole head and the. So, yes, and I've given that. So with post-transition, it is important to delineate the difference between post-grad services and transitioning supportive services. Both are important to ensuring that our students with disabilities are set up for success as they begin to move from one facet of life to the other. We know that transition support is available to our, all of our students with disabilities, and it is a combined effort of our staff and to assist our students with disabilities and to create a timeline or trajectory for them for when they start school and when they move into graduation. Versus post-grad is for our students who have aligned a standard diploma and who graduate before they are the age of 22 but continue to still need services within our district to ensure to obtain the skills that they need in the areas of career readiness, independent living, and other supports that they may eventually need to ensure their transition into adulthood and independent living within the community. Both of these services are supported under IDEA, the Reauthorized Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, as well as the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. Currently, within our transition, as you can see from both the current data provided courtesy of Dr. Homer's office, post-grad support for the 2022-2023 year, we have 157 students potentially requiring support over the next nine years, and we currently support 22 to 23 students within the program. This is spread out across two post-grad programs within two of our high schools, as well as Project Search for Students Requiring Post-Grad Services. For students who are not in these programs, they receive post-grad support services within their base schools. In order to support our students requiring post-grad supports, we have the following resources available for our students. We currently have one transition coordinator who helps to coordinate transition support for our students with disabilities to include CBI trips, connecting families and students with community stakeholders, as well as supporting the programs that support the students at each site. We also have five job coaches at each high school that support preparing our students with disabilities to be career-ready once they age out of high school. Project Search is one of our programs that are housed at Mary Washington Hospital, and we partner with them and DARs and RSVP to provide students with job readiness skills on-site and help students transition into the community with a job once they have completed the year-long program. Lastly, we have two post-grad programs in two of the high schools that provide students with post-grad career-ready skills to help them transition into the community. So our indicator data for 14 is, requires each of our schools, as you know, each school division has to meet this indicator for students with disabilities after they have graduated to ask what they are currently doing, that's part of the criteria. So one of the three questions that are asked to identify this indicator are, are they currently in a competitive employment job, higher education program, or is post-secondary job readiness program? We currently meet this indicator at 77%, however, our goal is to increase this number exponentially. However, our goal is to increase this number exponentially. As for what we are requesting of our amazing school board is that for tonight, we, our proposal to you is we have broken down into both short-term and long-term goals of where we are hoping that for us to go. Short-term, we would like to request support to provide additional training for our elementary and middle school programs to ensure that when our students reach high school, that they already have had exposure to transition readiness, much earlier than just at the high school level and having received it at the first time. Once students get to high school, they usually are already ready and exposed to experience and career readiness activities, and we currently do this well. However, this is an area we would like to see some improvement upon, and having that support at the elementary and middle school level will help to just strengthen that. We would also like you to consider adding a transition coordinator to help with those efforts at the elementary and middle school transition support levels. We would also like to ask of you to consider adding an additional post-grad program, as well as an additional para at our existing post-grad programs to help support all of our students that require post-grad experience. These students will continue to receive supports in their base school if they are not already in a program, but to have another program specific to post-grad will help us with these efforts. And based on the data, we see that our numbers are growing, and these are the type of things that will begin to be a little more pressing as we grow as a community. As for long-term, we would like to take a look at how our post-grad programs are established throughout the county and either have one large post-grad program to help with combined efforts or have one per high school. We also would like to focus on eliminating barriers for our post-secondary students. As we have seen from our indicator data, we are left with 23% of our population who, of students with disabilities, who are not actively participating in community-based programs after they graduate or aged out. Based on our interviews with stakeholders, we have found that transportation for students with disabilities is a very large barrier for them. So, that is something that we are hoping that we can look towards providing for them as well to ensure that we are meeting our 100% goal of our indicator 14. Thank you so much for your time. I will now open up to any questions that you may have for us.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any questions, comments? Ms. Holstead.
I just have a couple of comments. First, I love your dress, it's so nice, it's really nice. So, talk, can you talk a little bit about the supports again for the post-students that you have, oops, I just turned my thing sideways, but I think I can read it sideways, because I don't know how to get it back to not being sideways. Did you see what I did there? You have 43 students projected to require, oh, thank you, post-grad support next year. Can you talk a little bit about those supports, just so we, and how you help them?
Sure. What we are hoping for is that currently we have one coordinator who services a plethora of students, and that can become taxing. If we have more support, another teacher, another program, we, we're getting more kids at this point. It kind of comes down to, we're having an increase in students, and of course, that means less resources to help support those students. And we don't want any students to fall through the crack or not receive, of course, their very best services and support. So, what we're asking for is another transition coordinator and having a total of five job coaches, one for each of the high schools, to kind of help create, continue to have smaller class sizes for our students with disabilities, which we know is very important, and then to also have more, more post-grad teachers and an increase in para support. I hope I answered your question well.
It sort of does, yeah. I mean, I guess I, so there's also, can you tell me what Project Search is, and then I just need the, what DARs is?
Thank you, Dr. Homer.
And I think I can further answer your question too. Ms. Johnson did a great job, but I'm going to add to that.
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
As well, is, so, so when a student graduates with an applied studies diploma, they can return until they're 22 to receive additional supports.
Okay.
Life skills training, vocational training to prepare them to be immersed into the community. So, what we currently have established is we have two post-grad programs that the students are placed in to receive this additional support, one at Colonial Forge and one at Brookpoint, and then for this, and those programs are full, but then those students would receive those services in their base school. So, they would still receive those supports from the transition coordinator, from the job coaches, from the case managers, to provide them with those opportunities to be immersed into the community. But we would like to see us grow that post-grad program so that we can expand on those opportunities. We also have our Project Search program, which we've had now for going on five years, which is an amazing program, and we partner with a nationwide program called Project Search, and we partner with DARs, as well as RSVP, which provides us with job coaches.
Could you tell us what those acronyms stand for?
Yeah, I'm, thank you, Miss Lee, I apologize. So, DARs is the Department of Age and Rehabilitation Services. RSVP, I'm not sure what that stands for, I'll be honest with you, but they provide job coaching for our students when they're at Mary Washington Hospital, as well as when they're immersed into the community. So, it's another agency that we partner with to provide supports for our students. So, essentially, what happens is there's an application project process, this is for Project Search, and this is for post-grad students, and they, they apply, they do job-like skills, and then they, when they get into the program, they actually report to Mary Washington Hospital. We have a teacher and a para, and we provide them with a rotation of skills and responsibilities, like they go, they work in the cafeteria, they work making blood kits, they work in x-ray, there's a wide range of jobs that they provide them, and then they also work unilaterally to provide them with access to working as a job in the community, so that is the goal, so that we provide them with opportunities, and then they actually get a job afterwards. Some of them actually get jobs in the hospital, where the hospital will create a job for them because they've done such a great job, and they actually hire them. So, that's up to 10 students per year. So, this is one of the things that we would like to do is to expand that, because as we subtract those numbers, we still have, as we showed you, about 16 students that are getting services in their base school, where we would like to have more of a post-grad program for those students.
Yeah, okay, that clarifies it, and that's amazing, that makes me feel much happier.
It's awesome.
It speaks a lot, too. Now, what is the level of, I mean, what, at what level are we talking at? Because this says three to 12, like, as early as third grade, so what are the criteria?
So, that's, so that's what Ms. Johnson was talking about, to delineate the difference between transition and post-grad. So, we are responsible to help students transition throughout their academic years, to provide them with life skills and opportunities. So, when they do get to high school, it's not a shock of, wait a minute, we got to start talking about independent living and working and job exploration, like, they should be doing that as soon as possible, as every other student is, but our students with disabilities need that additional support.
Right.
So, once the child turns 14, we are required to do more explicit work with that student, with all of our students, but we like to start that earlier so we can do that job exploration. So, that's why there's a difference between those two.
Got it.
Yep.
Cool.
Dr. Chase.
So, I got to be on the committee this year, and, you know, it was really great the way we, I mean, we're redoing our advisory committees moving forward, but your committee was already sort of doing this of taking a very specific piece of, of special education is huge, but taking this very specific piece about how do kids transition from school into adulthood. And it was fascinating, some of the visitors we had who showed us all the amazing resources that are out there, but we need to do, have more support for, for those families to get those resources. So, it was great.
Thank you. Ms. Sigmund.
I really have no questions, but I do thank you for the work that you're doing, and, you know, I tend to agree with your, with your recommendations, I think that would be a, it really gives us a great direction to move towards, to provide services for these students. The transportation angle is actually really interesting, so that's where my brain is kind of stuck right now, because I, like, there's only so much we can do, but, like, there's got to be a creative solution there, so I look forward to looking further into that, seeing how that pans out.
Ms. Randall? What is indicator 14? What is that?
Yeah, great question. So, we, every school division is required to report out on a bunch of, indicator three to 14, that's specific to special education, that we have to provide input and information to make sure that we're staying aligned and in compliance with different areas. So, for indicator 14, that is the transition indicator, so for every student with an IEP that graduates, every single one with a disability, we have to call them and ask them, what are you doing? Where are you at right now? Are you working? Are you in a, in a, are you college? Are you, are you working at a job? Like, what are you doing? So, that's what we were sharing. We meet this indicator, but the cutoff is very, very low, but at 77%, we have a lot of work to do, and I don't accept 77%, even though we meet that indicator per state standards. I would like for us to improve on that area. And unfortunately, as we were just talking about, one of the barriers for our students is transportation, where they're like, we want to work, we want to be involved, but I just have no way of getting there. My parents work, I don't have money for transportation, and the Fred Bus, and all these other different barriers that they have, so.
Okay, that was my second question, so now you've answered that, too, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Ms. Guy, do you have any questions or comments? She's in the cloud, in Virginia Beach, no, it was in Virginia Beach, I think. Yes. I guess not for now. I want to thank you for the report, very informative, and I will...
Can you hear me?
Yes, oh, your turn, yes.
Yeah, Ms. Haley, you can't tell people where I am, that was secret.
Oh, well, not anymore.
My stalker knows where to get me.
Uh, we could, Ms. Lee, is there where you could make that sound better? We hear those waves in the background.
Oh, I'm sorry, ooh, that's horrible. You need me to go in?
Ms., yeah, just, just speak up if you could.
Okay, I can go in and leave the beach. Um, no, I actually had my questions answered, and I thought that this was a fantastic presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Guy. I, I was saying, I really appreciate the short-term and the long-term goals, because it's, it's good to think long-term, but you have to start somewhere, and the short-term is where you get started, and then you can get some excitement, you know, along the way. And, and I would ask Dr. Taylor if there's a way we can put some of this into our strategic plan, which we're going to be discussing at the next, next work session, because I think these are some, you know, some good things, and also, with respect to the transportation, I, I agree with Ms. Sigmund, I mean, this is really beyond us once the students are graduated, or beyond the postgraduate, but, you know, there may be a way we can work with our community partners to try to make that happen, and, and Dr. Taylor is very good at putting community members together and, and getting, you know, volunteers and contributions, so that will be a good target for him as well.
First of all, go Giants. I was very happy to just see that, I was like, oh, yay. If you guys have a cheat sheet with all the acronyms that you use, could you email it to me? Just, I mean, I should get myself familiar with them anyway, but I would just like a little cheat sheet, because there are a lot of acronyms, and not just you guys, like everybody.
Right.
So, I would love a cheat sheet if you have one.
All right.
Awesome.
If you send that to Dr. Taylor, he'll share it with all of us.
Yep.
So, thank you, thank you very much. And our next work session, we're going to be looking at the recommendations from the committee and reports from Dr. Taylor, so this is very timely to give this to us tonight. Thank you very much for, for joining us in your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us to item 602, FY23 State Budget Update. Mr. Fulmer.
Good evening.
I know.
Let's see if I am smarter than Dr. Homer.
Well, you've had a lot more experience up there.
Yes.
There it is.
I got...
God don't let go.
I got nothing.
Dr. Homer's waiting. No, he's not waiting anymore, he's leaving.
He's counting down, he's like, Chris has a big bunch.
Who's using Chrome? Not Dr. Homer. We'll, we'll talk with Ms. Hall about making this more user-friendly the next meeting.
I can sing if you want.
Oh.
Man, that was fast.
Can you, can you dance, too?
No, that's Maya. I don't step on, I'll watch my pun, I don't step on her toes. How do you like that one?
Well, if he doesn't have it in two minutes, we'll let you start singing.
Oh, yay! I mean, oh, quickly, he found one.
I can delay. Hold on, I don't have it.
See, on your face was so, was so obvious, he just had a very urgent look.
So, this is a...
It'd be a lot more interesting to hear Ms. Holstead sing.
Hold on, I got you. Oh, just, where, sorry? Awesome, thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Taylor. I gave this presentation to our Fab C a few weeks ago, and then providing it to the school board this evening for additional feedback and, and filling you in. Really great news is, you know, in all three areas I've listed here, we have some additional funding and some decisions to make. So, really positive news coming from the state after the governor has signed the final budget after the General Assembly amendments. So, as you may recall, we were actually still using the governor's budget all the way through the adopted budget that you guys voted on, and then subsequently to there, the General Assembly made some amendments and the governor adopted them. What that included was some operating revenue increases, which are recurring, also included a bonus for SOQ-funded staff, and I'll get into those details. Additionally, the state set aside some one-time construction funding. So, right now, looking at presenting this to you and getting some recommendations, we will have to come back and request appropriation from the Board of Supervisors. So, on our recurring operating revenue, looking at an additional $1.75 million from the state. As I mentioned, this will require an additional appropriation by the Board of Supervisors. Superintendent's laid out some recommendations and considerations for you. Number one on that list, maybe no surprise, but we added some additional funding for fuel from the time of the superintendent's budget through the approved and the adopted budget, to the tune of we increased it by about $300,000 from what was in our FY22 budget. We kind of expected our fuel prices to start to drop over time and throughout the school year. From the time that we adopted the budget, they actually gradually steadily increased, they've started to level off and decrease a little bit, but if it was to hold about where the fuel prices are right now, we're looking at an additional $1 million that we would need in our operating budget. Additionally, superintendent, because this is recurring revenue, we can look at some recurring expenditures. Fuel could be recurring, or it could drop off in a year, and we'll evaluate that next year, but I'm going to actually let Dr. Taylor, if you want to address some of the staffing standards, recommendations you have.
So, one of our big projects this summer is we are reviewing the staffing standards for all of our schools, and we've noticed a couple of issues that we'll bring forward in future budget years, in the five-year budget and in the fiscal '24 budget, and a couple of them, we feel like we can take a hard look at going into this budget, given the fact that we do have a little bit of increased operating revenue. These aren't in any particular order. Obviously, the fuel funding does carry some precedence, because that is a hard operational expense, but looking next at, at our ESOL teacher staffing formula, right now, we currently staff to the SOQs, which is a ratio of 1 to 50. That, that's a pretty alarming ratio for staffing ESOL teachers. We, we know that there's a better way to staff a little bit more aligned to the level that the student is at. Our Level 1 students are newcomers to our community, our Level 4 students are exiting the program upon completion of that level, and so, we need to account for that in a, in a more differentiated way, and we can be a little bit more aggressive at that. Our most pressing need for ESOL staffing across the division is actually at the secondary level in middle school and high school. And so, that would be an area that we would want to look at. As we nail down a, a great number for, for our fuel reserve, we would be looking at, at ESOL teachers as being the next priority. Another area that we noticed a little bit of an irregularity is that right now, we, we also staff to the SOQs for high school assistant principals, as we do with all of our assistant principals, actually, we, we do pretty well in that, in that camp in terms of staffing, but we count one of our high school principal, assistant principals as a director of student activities, and that person is not really a high school assistant principal, they really are a director of student activities and, and does not have a job description that is directly aligned with the other responsibilities that other assistant principals have. We feel like there's enough differentiation in those job responsibilities that we would look at splitting that, and whether it lands now or whether it lands in a future budget, this is an area that, that concerns us, because it's not really a genuine representation of what the, the standards of quality do spell out for that position, where we're not really fulfilling that standard, I would say, in earnest. So, those, I would say, are probably our three top. There's a couple other things that we definitely would consider. The board may recall, and it's... The board may recall in its adopted budget that we, we wanted to fund major maintenance with ongoing expense. We absolutely think that that is something that we need to pursue. However, as Mr. Fulmer's going to disclose in a couple of slides, we have some construction money that will help defray some of that major maintenance expense for this upcoming year. Another initiative that was not successful in the supervisor's approved budget, but was in your approved budget, was an initiative that I brought forward on differentiating school-based funding. We absolutely think that that is a great strategy as well. However, that would be something that we would have wanted to plan with families well in advance of September approval, for it to have a maximum impact. So when we're making these recommendations, we are, we're following a timeline that would look like an appropriation in September, and how we might use those funds adequately, given that it would be a September appropriation, and where we might put these funds to the highest and best use. And so that, that's just for the operating, but we also have two other issues to, to bring before the board for consideration.
So additionally, the state approved a $1,000 bonus paid to SOQ-funded staff. And a couple clarifications. Normally, when we get a bonus or any other funding, it is only for SOQ-funded staff, but then they also take, only pay the state's share and not the local government's share. And so in this case, they're only funding SOQ-funded staff, but they're actually paying the full share, so they're not taking that 35% and whacking it. They are leaving the full 100% of those SOQ-funded staff. So that's a positive. The negative is we have more staff than the minimum requirements of the SOQ. And so the state is providing $3 million for those SOQ-funded staff. We need approximately $1.7 million to cover the remaining staff in the division. The state funding is actually coming from one-time federal pandemic relief funds. So kind of following suit with that, as presented a couple meetings ago, with a, with a year-end update and some of our ESR funding update, we do have some unallocated ESR 3 funds. So we're kind of following suit with the county or the state and recommending that we use the balance of our ESR 3 funds to help fill that, fill that gap there. We also looked at our health benefits fund, and we're going to be reporting back to the Fab C at the next meeting on kind of the status of our health benefits fund. We have funded bonuses out of that fund a few years ago with excess reserve. After paying that, in addition, we also funded some of our OPEB reserve, about nine and a half, 9.7 million dollars, I believe. And so we still have a balance in our health benefits fund, but we also want to maintain a balance in there to cover us for future increases and health benefit increase costs. So right now, recommending that we use our ESR funds to, to fill that gap, but also looking at the health benefits fund, and we'll bring that information to the Fab C on August 5th. Lastly, the state included one-time funding, non-recurring, for FY23 only, of $8.7 million to be used towards construction projects. Once again, this requires appropriation by the Board of Supervisors. Just kind of highlighting where we're at with some of our unfunded 3R projects. In 2023, on that list, we had about $8 million, 2024 was $9 million, but over the 10 years, we had over $130 million in unfunded 3R projects. So recommending that we take that $8 million and allocate it towards those unfunded 3R projects that already really been approved, we'll bring in actually that list back to the board at the next meeting for our next kind of 10 years of our, of our 3R list. So we'll have to identify the specific projects, but right now proposing that, that we address those projects on our 3R list. So once again, just want to, to highlight all positives from the state this time around. And these are all, we have some recurring money on the operating side, and then some one-time funding for the SOQ bonus, and then our construction funding is one-time, but all three require appropriation from the Board of Supervisors, and we'll bring that revised resolution back at our next meeting after getting some guidance from the school board. I'd love to take any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Well, let's start with Dr. Chase.
And do you want, can you just ask, I mean, I've got quite a few.
Well, why don't, why don't we have you ask the questions, and then if something that they need to get more information to get back to us, if it's going to be, you know, a lot of background or something, it may be good for us to get it, you know, in, in written form.
Sure. And some of these questions are...
If they're easy answer, we can get that now.
So a quick question. Can the construction funds be used for trailers?
That is a good question. I do not believe so.
Okay.
It's supposed to be improving existing buildings and, and the maintenance on those buildings, but I can look into that.
Will you look into that? Yeah, I'm just curious about that.
What, what about existing trailers?
So right now, we're only, so we're purchasing the trailers at Conway, but, and we have one trailer at AG Wright and one at Colonial Forge. The trailers at Rocky Run, we're actually leasing, so we wouldn't want to obviously invest a ton of money in those.
Right. So I just, it's just curious. I mean, you know, we've heard from a number of elementary schools that art and music are on carts or in the stage, and they said they would love to have a trailer. And so I don't know if this would be something we, and I don't know that it's the will of the board, I don't even know if it's my will, but it's just a question to, to kind of know whether that's an option or not. And then also, I, I understand the, the idea of, of using this for 3R projects, but 8 million is kind of a big number. Are there projects at Hartwood or Drew that would be helped? I mean, if, if Drew's not going to be addressed for 10 years, I have to wonder whether there's something that could be done for $8 million that, that we could get done, that, you know? And, and I understand there's all kinds of lead time for, for getting these things. So just a couple of questions along that line. Should I keep going?
Sure. Let's get all the questions out, and then, I mean, if it's an easy answer, we can get it now. If not, we can get a memo.
Okay. So then, you know, for the operating costs, Dr. Taylor, in, in the Fab, you sort of had high school principals as the priority, but tonight you seem to say more ESOL teachers were the priority. Where, what, what's going on there? Where are we?
So you, you have a couple of dilemmas, and I, and I would say that they're in no particular order, they just are priorities that need to be addressed, and whether they're addressed now, or they're addressed in future budget years, they do need to be addressed.
And, and are you going to be able to, like, if you want to do ESOL teachers, will you be able to find ESOL teachers now for September?
So I thi, I think you're going to, to struggle to find any staff. But at the same time, the important piece to note here is that this is part of the operating budget, so that is year-over-year funding. So when, when you have the ability to find and hire somebody, you better have a position to put them in.
Right.
And that's a, an important, an important part of this recommendation versus some of the other initiatives that we might invest in, which may be a little bit more short-term in nature.
Right. So, and, and just, you know, operating funds, so potentially, this money could then be our end-of-year funds that we're using for 3R projects.
Correct.
So we could have even more money for 3R projects here.
That's correct.
Any way to use some of this money to extend ESR funds, since we're going to use, you're proposing to use ESR funds for the bonus? You know, I've heard from, from many elementary school principals, their sort of dread of losing their paras. Could we instead use some of this money to extend the para support for all of '23, '24, since we're taking this, you know, we're basically using...
So that, that's a phenomenal question. And what I will say is that we are ready, are in a position to support the commitments that we've made through ESR funds. But why this is a, a great investment for a one-time expenditure is that you have a revenue source that has a timeline on it. So knowing that we can fulfill our commitments that we've already made for the timeline that we have through fiscal '24, and then also knowing that that is going to sunset, and we do have revenue to support this other one-time expense, it, it does line up.
Thank you.
That's a great question, because I know that that's a concern that's widespread.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to ask Ms. Guy, do you have any comments or questions?
She said that she was having a little bit of an audio trouble, and she texted me that she has no comments or questions about it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hall. Ms. Sigmund.
Thank you. I was at the budget committee, so I'm going to ask similar question that I asked there for clarity's sake. We talk about the bonuses being for SOQ positions, but we in our county, we are going to provide a bonus to every contract employee, correct?
Correct.
So there will be, I mean, no exceptions there from bus drivers right on top?
Yes, ma'am.
As long as they're a contractor.
From all funds as well. So fleet, school nutrition, our operating fund, and, and grants, all contracted positions.
Okay.
Ms. Sigmund, if I, if I may, this is a wonderful teachable moment for the community in that some of our positions are locally funded. And some of those positions are even classrooms funded and not, excuse me, are classroom teachers that are, that are locally funded. The SOQs refer to the standards of quality, which are the state staffing standards. And the state staffing standards of what the state considers a level of quality is not what we would consider a level of quality. For example, a staffing standard that calls for classroom teachers to be staffed at a ratio of 1 to 35 would be completely unacceptable in Stafford County. Yet, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, that is considered quality. So we staff above that standard pretty substantially, and in many cases, it's, it's a division-wide ratio below 25 to 1. So in that respect, that difference is covered using local revenues. And those local revenues support teachers in full, and that full cost is bore by the local government. And so those would not be considered SOQ-funded positions. So we would be responsible for that, and we would have some internal equity issues if we weren't supporting all positions that, and, and if we just went with SOQ-funded positions.
And Dr. Taylor, can I just add, school nurses are not SOQ positions.
That's correct.
So the school nurses are not required by the state, but we have a school nurse in every single school.
That's exactly why I asked the question to start with, is because I want to make sure that we are, you know, providing for everyone. And it was already very generous that they're not giving us just a share of the SOQ positions, they're giving us 100% of those SOQ positions. So that makes it a little bit smaller of a net, but I'm very, very grateful for the opportunity to, to do it at all.
Thank you. Ms. Halsted?
Oh, hold on, sorry. This thing is, there it is. Actually, Maureen asked the question that I had, which was just to ensure that they, we were covering all at the, it's, it's all the same flat rate across the board, right?
Yes, so typically, when we provide bonuses, the full amount would be $1,000 to our full-time employees, and our half-time employees would receive $500.
Okay, that makes sense.
Full contracted, part-time.
Can you take, like, one minute to explain when we look at the construction money and what that, what we're actually looking at there? Are we, are we talking about the original projects that were presented to us, like the fire alarm systems and all that, or just we're going back to the drawing board on the 3R project?
So it would be more than just the year-end projects that we identified, so it's looking at our full, I'll say 10 years, but really, it's only looking at a couple of years, because we can't fund the full unfunded 10-year 3R list, which is at 130 million. But we can try to look at our first couple of years of the more immediate needs that we have, whether it be fire alarms and generators that we were not able to get to at year-end, and we can figure out which ones we can get completed in the timeline.
But now we have the ability to go back and maybe reprioritize some of the things that we, we didn't have that before. Now we can go back, maybe look at a little more discerning, and pull some things from deeper down in the list, right?
Correct.
Because there's no limitation, not no limitation, but there's no, what's the word I'm looking for? Constraints on it, right? Like, if, if we say it's a construction project and we pull it out of our 3R, the money is, we don't have to obligate it, explain it, or do anything.
No, I mean, it has to be for construction repairs and maintenance.
But it can be any, like I'm saying, like, we don't have to go through a whole process of saying...
Yeah, really, the only, I believe the only limitation they put on it is where it shouldn't be used for areas that are specific for extracurricular, so we're not going to go and put in new bleachers for the, you know, field or, or et cetera. So this is supposed to be used for the educational spaces.
No park.
Now, what about playgrounds? Because my understanding is that, to a certain extent, they are an extension of the educational process. Are they...
They, they are covered because they are part of the elementary day program.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I know we have a number of schools that are struggling with their playgrounds, so if that's something we could look at as well, they, they may not already be on the list, but...
And we can't purchase land. I asked that question during the Fab C.
And we can't save it for future construction projects.
That is correct.
It's got a couple of years, a couple of years that it has to be spent down.
Yeah.
Is there any chance this will be a reoccurring? No, I'm just kidding. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Randall?
Yes, I wanted to know the ESR funding. Did we have a plan to spend it all in a certain way, and now we're looking at spending it differently? Because I, I mean, I don't want to, I, I guess what I would like to know is that, obviously, if you're going to use it for something, then you're not going to use it for something else.
Right.
And so I'm wondering, what is the something else that we're not going to be using it for?
Yeah, so when we approved the ESR spending, and over the last couple of years...
Yeah.
We had set aside the majority of it. You know, the ESR 3 was, you know, roughly $14 million, and so we did the paras and some other positions, and also some one-time, I'll say one-time expenditures that were due to COVID that popped up, air filters and masks and such. So we had that, but we also kind of left a lump sum that was sitting aside that wasn't directly allocated to any purpose. And we've also had some savings because we didn't, you know, we approved the paras in August or September of last year, where they really weren't, most of them weren't really hired until you get into November, December. So we incurred some additional vacancies there that then stay in that ESR funding. So we just got additional funding left in our ESR that either one was not allocated, or some things that we had allocated that have now been freed up because they haven't been spent.
Okay.
Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I still guess I wonder, like, what isn't? Is there anything else that we are not getting that we might need for our students or staff?
Yeah, so I think as we're coming out of the pandemic, you know, some of those recurring expenditures that we allocated over multiple years are starting to wind down, and we're not seeing those, some of those are continuing at the same rate. We still have some money set aside for learning loss, you know, specifically whether it is, you know, some after-school tutoring or, or before-school tutoring, and a little bit for summer school. I don't have it with me, but when I presented, I think it was in June, I kind of broke out the ESR 2 and 3 funding...
Yeah.
And where it was being spent at, and where those balances are.
Okay. And so, well, you answered the question with the, the list that we just recently approved will be included in this construction project. Okay, thank you.
She's talking about the, the North Stafford Auditorium, the couple, each, what were they?
Fire alarms and...
Fire alarm, that's, that's right, the two fire alarms, the playground.
Just news to you, I haven't shared it yet, but we were able to fund a couple of those fire alarms in the first couple of projects on that list, so that, that was good news with some year-end funding. But not all the projects on the list, as I warned, that we probably weren't going to be able to get to them all.
But now we can.
Yeah.
So they'll be under consideration along with the other projects on the 3R list?
They will probably be at the top of our list that we bring forward, because they've already been identified as a, as a pretty deep need there.
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, it might be helpful if you could provide the 3R list to the board, because I know there's, you know, some members that haven't seen it at least as many times as some others of us. And, and that would be good for us to, to review prior to when this comes back to the board for discussion. And I suggest that if anybody, you know, on the board, as Ms. Halsted indicated, has, you know, some interest, or Dr. Chase as well, in perhaps moving some projects up, that they, you know, have that discussion with Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Or, you know, maybe you, we can make sure that gets to the Fab prior to the, the meeting with the Fab, because it is ultimately going to be this board's decision as to where that money's allocated. I don't think there's any question that anything on that list is, is needed. It's just a matter of, you know, where the, the priorities are, and this, this, this money is, is, is a gift, and we need to use it wisely.
Madam Chair, as a, as a, as a process step in terms of where we go from here, Mr. Fulmer and I will bring hard numbers and spreadsheets tied to each of these three individual recommendations back to the Fab, and from there, bring back to the full board at your August 9th meeting for consideration, and if approved, forwarded to the supervisors for their approval in September.
Okay, and, and I would ask on behalf of the four members who aren't on the Fab, if that information that's going to the Fab could be shared with the rest of the board at, at the same time it's shared with the Fab? So, that way, it's, we, we're not waiting until later on. I mean, this, this is an exception, um, to the norm, that we would have this opportunity and, and this amount of funding available. And I think it's important for every board member to, uh, have access to that information and, and be prepared to have the discussion, um, you know, when, when it comes up at the next meeting. So, and, and it's not anything we have to approve all at once, even if there's, um, that, you know, I don't know if the, um, you, you know, how the Fab's going to look at it, but some of these projects are probably not going to be able to be completed during the school year, if, um-
Don't we have to go across the street to get the appropriation? So, we do have to kind of specify to some degree how it's going to be spent?
Well, but, but we only need it appropriated as we're going to spend it. So, I'm, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to make the point that we don't have to decide this all at once. If there are areas of particular interest to, you know, individual board members, and they want to have more of a discussion, you know, among the board, we may not have enough time to have that discussion at the next board meeting. So, it's just something that, you, you know, I don't expect this to go to the Fab, the Fab, you know, have their discussion come with a recommendation and have it be rubber-stamped. I mean, that might happen, but, you know, this, this is a unique opportunity, so I want to reserve that, um, that right for every board member to, to have some input on it.
I'm sorry, did you say it was a, is there a use it or lose it timeframe on it? That's not what this is, right?
We have multiple years.
You have multiple, I thought I heard you say that.
On the construction funding.
On the construction, right, right, right.
Um, and I'm, I know, Ms. Healy, you're referring to the construction funding, funding, but I just want to clarify-
Eight point seven five million.
Correct. Yeah, but I do want to clarify, um, we will be under a little bit of a time constraint for the bonus money, so-
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about the construction money. I don't have a, I don't have a question about the other. I think that's very clear, what's being recommended. And, and my recollection, um, Ms. Randall, was that at the time we got this ESER funding, we were not going to pre-allocate all of it, that we wanted to leave a portion of it in reserve in case something came up that we may need to, to use it for. So, I, I don't think, it doesn't sound like it's a matter of we're choosing to do the bonuses and not doing something else. It's just, we're choosing to u- use this funding for the bonuses, but nothing is getting cast aside or taken off the list. Is that correct, Mr. Fulmer?
Correct, yeah, and I knew you understood. I just wanted to clarify for, for the audience-
Oh, yeah.
That we did have the timeline for the bonuses.
No, I'm, I'm strictly talking about the construction. And it, it may be that everybody's in agreement and done, but may not. So, I want, I want to be prepared. And I, I have full faith in the, in the Fab, but I do think this is of such importance to every member of this board, that, you know, we all might want to have something to, um, you know, some, some input in, in it. So, it's, if we get those materials, we can always contact the Fab. And Ms. Sigmund, you're the chair of the Fab? So, we can get to you. Yes, congratulations to Ms. Sigmund, Chair of the Fab, and Ms. Halsted, who's Chair of the Governance Committee. So, we have fresh, fresh insight. Thank you, ladies. All right, all right. You showed us how smart you were. You want to come back up and work those, uh? I think Dr. Hammer didn't even stay to see the, the show. All right, that brings us to awards and recognitions. Seven point oh-one recognition of members of the media being nominated to the V S B A Media Honor Roll.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the School Board, Dr. Taylor. At this time, I'd like to call forward Ted Schubel from B one oh-one point five, Adele Uphouse from the Freelance Star, Drew Wilder from NBC Four, and Tom Rowsey from W J L A. This is a resolution to nominate media to the Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll. Whereas, in each community, the public schools are shaped by the community to provide the most appropriate and effective education for the schoolchildren who attend those schools. And whereas, public schools are dependent upon the community's support in countless ways, including support in setting goals for the education of our children, in establishing successful volunteer and booster programs at the schools, for funding, for annual funding of operations and periodic bond elections, and in the election of qualified school board members. And whereas, much of the community's knowledge and opinions about the public schools rely on responsible reporting by local media representatives who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will, will be focused on various issues, and what the tone of the reporting will be. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the School Board of Stafford County, that Ted Schubel from B one oh-one point five, Adele Uphouse, the Freelance Star, Drew Wilder, NBC Four, and Tom Rowsey, W J L A, be nominated for placement on the statewide V S B A Media Honor Roll, calling attention to the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of reporting on this community's public schools. We express our appreciation for your balanced and accurate approach to sharing with this community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by the teachers and students. Your work has aided the Stafford community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this twelfth day of July, two thousand twenty-two. Thank you. Can I take a quick photo? Oh, thank you. Wonderful.
I, I just want to take a moment to ask Dr. Taylor to introduce our newest member of our communications staff, who is fresh from JMU.
Oh, that's Shelby.
That's Shelby. Shelby is our media specialist.
Is it, is this Emily?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's Shelby? You're looking for Shelby with the mask on?
Yeah, no worries.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
All right, moving right along, that brings us to citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted for each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name in organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comment, which is profane abuse or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy eleven thirteen, Public Complaints. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone who's signed up?
Yes, ma'am, four people did sign up. Uh, the first will be Michelle Wickman, followed by Diane Spate, and then Tina Bryan, and then Jessica Tipling.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Here's a familiar face.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. My name is Michelle Wickman. I live in the Garrisonville District, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Stafford Education Association regarding the updates to state funding that Mr. Fulmer presented to you. With fuel costs being what they are and the significant growth we've seen over the past year, Dr. Taylor's recommendations for allocating the additional state funds are sound. Using the funds in this way will help ease the burden caused by current fuel prices, which were unanticipated during last year's budget development. Adding an AP and ESOL staff to high schools will help Stafford provide a better experience for its high school students and educators, particularly considering the significant rise in attendance we've seen. Since the money for bonuses has already been allocated at the state level, we know our ESER Q positions are covered. Uh, Dr. Taylor is asking that you approve use of ESER funds to make this bonus available to all staff. We sincerely appreciate this recommendation to ensure every Stafford employee gets the compensation they deserve. The state is using their one-time funding to allocate bonuses, and it makes sense for us to do the same, employing ESER funds to cover those non-SOQ positions. The Board of Supervisors issued a minimum bonus of a thousand dollars to most county employees last year, so we hope that your decision tonight reflects the same consideration for Stafford educators. We know the Board of Supervisors must appropriate these funds from the state, and we will certainly advocate for them to make the right decision. But it starts with your approval of these allocations when they come to action next month, so please move forward with the superintendent's recommendations. We appreciate your dedication to Stafford County schools, and look forward to a renewed partnership with the School Board based on transparency and a shared commitment to the best interests of Stafford educators. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Diane Spate, and this is Lori Hunter. We are here as representatives of the Forge Orchestra Parents Association, which is the booster organization for the Colonial Forge High School Orchestra and Guitar Programs. We are here to make a request that the current policy of limiting the amount of personal funds from each family of five hundred for field trips be reconsidered. We are asking for the fund limitation to be raised to seven hundred per family. The current policy has been in place longer than I personally have been a part of the boost organization, which was two thousand fourteen. Since that time, costs have continued to rise with the greatest increase in the last year. It has always been challenging to plan these worthwhile trips within that five hundred dollar limit, but now, it is impossible. In researching the surrounding counties, we found that Spotsylvania County does not have these limitations and approves the trip budgets on a case-by-case basis. Prince William County does not list the requirements specifically, but as a former music teacher in that county, I have a personal relationship with many directors there and know that they have been approved for budgets up to seven hundred per family. These trips are not only an opportunity for our students to work with amazing musical directors from all over the country, they also give the opportunity to perform to crowds from around the world. These trips give our students a chance to grow as performers and people well beyond the classroom. We encourage you to please reconsider this policy, as it not only impacts the group that we represent, it impacts all of the groups that provide these amazing opportunities to travel and grow. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Do you have to leave this?
Oh, yes.
Next is Tina Bryan, and then Jessica Tipling. Madam Chair, I don't believe the other two are here. Oh, I-
I'm sorry. I see somebody coming down.
Hi, Jesse Tipling, Falmouth District. Um, yeah, my daughter Lily, at the last School Board meeting, she came and shared some pretty heavy stuff. Um, and she's obviously, like, an awesome advocate and unafraid to speak her truth. So, thank you so much for listening to her. Um, I'm not here to help back that up. I, we always support her, but she is pretty strong on her own, so we let her do her own advocacy. I am here, however, to recognize two of the leaders in the county. First is Dr. Greider. He immediately made the move to go out and talk to Lily, to listen to her, learn from her, and really kind of understand what she was talking about and, um, get to the bottom of it. And then also, uh, Mr. Backy at Dixon Smith, he's, I invited her to come and work through the SIP plan, the School Improvement Plan at the school. So, she's super excited about that. She's going to lend her voice, and he's going to add something that really takes care of bullying for all kids, but also protects the kids that she shared, so, or that she talked about. So, thank you so much for listening, and thank you to those leaders, I know one of them's here, for, for making the moves to really, um, help her advocacy and, and improve things for these kids.
Thank you, daughter, for us, for coming. Is that the end of the public comments? Is, when does our policy go into effect?
It, July first. It, it went into effect on July first.
Okay. Um, well, I, it looks like we have some people here. Does the board have any objection to taking them? I, I think we need to advertise that policy, make sure it's clear to everybody, but if we've got, is there anyone else, um, who wants to speak? We, we actually, when we changed our meetings, we, uh, put into the policy that speakers had to sign up, um, online or by, is it, what time?
By two P M.
By two P M. on the meeting day. So, if you weren't aware of that, uh, apologize, um, I don't hear any objections to the board, so if you want to speak, you're welcome to come. But for future meetings, it, it, you will have to sign up, you know, online, right, Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am.
By two o'clock on, on the meeting dates, so.
Or by calling me.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. I have mine on my phone, so, excuse me. Get it up bigger. All right. Um, my name is Jennifer Lombardo, and I appreciate the members of the board and Dr. Taylor for letting me speak tonight. I'm a member, I live in Falmouth District. And I'm here tonight just to ask that, given the changes to the high school schedule, we're going back to something that's earlier out, that Stafford County schools bring back the staffed after-school learning labs or study halls for high school students at all the high schools. The reason that I'm asking that is that students released at two P M. first have to exit this school, then they have to exit the parking lot, which is yet another evolution. Drive home or ride the bus home, change clothes, get something to eat, head back for after-school activities, for games. Some of the games, you need to be there at four o'clock. Uh, if you work, if you're in softball, baseball, you work the field, so. There isn't enough time around time there, and we kind of got away from students being able to stay after school in the last couple of years. So, what I'm asking for is that this be done equitably across all the high schools, and it not be left up to individual teams or individual sponsors of activities, because not all those are employees of the school system, and that those positions be staffed at the schools. So, you know, that student leaves, goes and gets, switches out their stuff in their car, if they have a car and they drove to school, or switches out at their locker, can go to study hall and leave when they need to, or leave the library if it's a, you know, formal study hall or whatever, but that those students be allowed to stay on campus, instead of, we all sign the piece of paper when we send, um, if you had a parking pass, that we have to leave immediately. And I don't want that kind of pressure on the students, that they're, like, going around the corner to sit on the curb so they can get the work done, because they can't go home. So, I, um, appreciate your time, I appreciate your consideration of this concept, returning to this concept. We did used to have this, I, at least the high school that I'm familiar with, and I hope that that would be something we could put in place across all the high schools. So, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Dana Brown, I live in the Rock Hill District. Thank you for indulging the two of us. I did, I thought you were still going to offer, anybody was here after the speaker, so, thank you. I have a couple of things I just wanted to mention tonight. First one is, I'd like us to think about changing the way that we reward our teachers. I think we have some really great teachers, and then we have some not-so-great ones. I personally think teachers should be rewarded on merit. As a taxpayer, I'm kind of tired of these across-the-board raises for everyone, regardless of teacher performance. The great ones get the same raise as the bad ones, and we all know we have some less-than-stellar ones. Our current policy, I think, helps keep deadweight teachers in place. Maybe if they don't get a raise, they'll think about changing their performance or moving on. And changing the way that we reward teachers might, just might, help to head off school-choice vouchers. They're coming. Uh, the Arizona governor, uh, just signed a law last week that allows parents to take their student allotment to their school of choice, public or private, and that money comes out of the public school budget. So, this is coming to a school near us. So, maybe if we start improving some of our teachers, that might keep people, their money here. Separately, aside from that, I'd like to give a shout-out to Mr. Crosswell at Mountain View High School. He's one of those great teachers that I was talking about. Not only is he a good teacher for his current students, he sticks by them when they grow up and they go off to college. He offered my adult daughter, a former student, instructional help, anytime she needed it as she navigates college. That is not included in his salary, but he does it because he wants his students to succeed. That's the kind of teachers that we want to keep. Separates topic again, I went to your work session this afternoon, and I actually agree with Ms. Sigmund and Ms. Halsted on the new CASBA membership. I'm not sure that we want to risk our reputation and our name on a board that we don't know a lot about. Maybe a wait-and-see approach might be something better. And then lastly, on our new student code of conduct, I'd like to offer some support. I think the fa, the phrase restorative practices and restorative justice needs to be removed. To me, that just signals excess leniency right out of the gate. This problematic policy came up during our ad hoc transportation committee meeting, um, this past winter. Kind of the namby-pamby policy we've had for the last several years, I think, has made behavior worse. Um, I've got old student code of conduct books for the last twenty years. They were much stricter and much more clear-cut. So, that's it. Thank you again for letting me talk tonight.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Taylor- Thank you. Dr. Taylor, perhaps you could determine a mechanism to communicate to the public the change in the public comment, because I don't want someone to come here and wait all the meeting and expect a comment. But then again, you know, we asked for the sign-up in advance, and we actually have an opportunity to provide digital comments as well, which are provided to all the board members before the meeting. And is that cut-off 2:00 as well? Yeah, so we get those digital comments before we even come to the meeting. So, if there's a way to communicate that to the public, I think that would, you know, that would be a good thing. I think with this being the first meeting, I appreciate the board, you know, agreeing to allow the speakers to speak, but I don't think it's something we're going to be able to do at every meeting, because then we're in violation of our policy. And as we, we're going to evaluate that change in the meeting schedule, and that's something we can also look at in December when we have that, the evaluation on the meetings. All right, finally, action items. 9.01, approval to pay the initial cost for a digital mapping program in the amount of $104,872, the entirety of which will be reimbursed by the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services at the completion of the project. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve action item 9.01, second.
Okay, motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Sigmund. Any discussion?
I have a question, madam.
Okay.
Chair, Ms. Randall. So, I just am curious, what is the difference in this versus what we currently have in our, our call, I don't know what that gets called?
So, our Assistant Director for Safety, Security, and Risk Management is Chris Zuck, and he can answer some questions about.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you have. The significant difference is this, is that these maps are digital floor plan maps that are actually geolocated into the 911 system. So, they're actually integrated with our 911 system here. We'll geolocate if somebody's on the property with a phone, we'll geolocate them on that property. They're grid maps, too, so they're used to identify certain locations off-campus as well, like on general campus. So, each school would have, depending upon how many levels are on the school, would have a micro map. And then if two schools shared a general location like Mountainview and Margaret Brant, there would be one macro map that would cover both locations as well.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So, in short, 20 years ago, when we'd watch a movie and there'd be some really cool action sequence with a 3D map and a red dot in it, that's now reality and we can do that. It's kind of cool.
But it looks, I mean, I guess the image that I remember seeing in the center was that, I mean, when you pulled up a floor plan of a school, there was dots everywhere, so I knew where the cameras were. And if you wanted to, you could click on any of those cameras. And even as I'm watching that map, I can see patterns, I don't know if I'm supposed to be saying all this, but whatever, sorry. You can see patterns and so you know people. That's like people moving. So, that's why I'm just curious as to, I thought that was pretty great. This is better?
This is actually tied into our 911 system. So, this actually helps.
And that is not?
No. I mean, they have the ability to view those maps and view those cameras as well. But this is more to help first responders as they're arriving on scene to coordinate location of services and things like that.
Okay.
So, yeah. And it's also a part of a standardization project across the state of Virginia.
Oh, standardization. Got it. Okay, thank you.
I just have one question. So, if I understand it, we lay out the money originally and then the Department of Corrections will return, like, they'll reimburse us the money for it.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am.
And what's the timeframe, like, for, from start to finish?
Good question. I don't know the answer to that. Our MOU, we have a memorandum of understanding with Department of Criminal Justice Services in Virginia, and that is good till December of 2023.
Okay.
So, I'm hopeful as soon as we get approval that we can start moving forward and start working with them this week.
Great.
Okay, stand by. You may get approval.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You got your approval.
Yay!
All right, 9.02, adoption of amendments to policy 1110, advisory committees to the board. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the adoption of amendments to policy 1110.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Randall, second by Ms. Halsted. Any discussion?
Yes. I received late today some comments on the policy from a concerned citizen that there was some large gaps and questions that still needed to be answered.
Oh, she's back. Okay, Ms. Guy? Is Ms. Guy back? Okay.
Just make sure she's being hit by a tsunami wave.
She's having some weather communication.
We heard her saying bye, like she was on her way out.
All right, go ahead.
So, I have not necessarily had time to review them. I feel reluctant to approve this without actually taking those questions into consideration. I'm not sure how to proceed forward, because they came so late. I don't know whether to approve and take a look at them and ask for consideration. Like, I don't know how that works, because they came around 2:00 today to me. And I feel like we should probably hear them out. Because, only because they're the advisory committees that we're actually looking for.
Can you tell us what the questions are?
Do you want me to look them?
Well, I'm just wondering if there's something we can address now.
It's a few, it's a few.
No, I mean, is it one person that's doing this?
It's a group of people that got together to comment, to make some comments on it. And so, it's really sort of, hold on. You can see it in there. I mean, there's a few more questions about like how, you know, like why is it worded some of the ways?
Well, this is, this was on for information earlier. It's unfortunate that that came in at the last minute.
It is, it is. I know, but we are, it's also a citizen, we're asking the citizens to be more involved in the advisory board. So, I'm reluctant to, it's just me, I'm reluctant to go forward, knowing that I, we haven't had a chance to.
But the other thing, though, too, is that if there is something in particular that, I mean, you can always bring it up as a question. It's always something that we can handle. But the policy itself has been brought forward. We bring things forward as a policy twice just for that reason of, for the citizen engagement. And in this case, it's been since May, June? This is the third time. It's right now.
Dr. Taylor, in terms of when we get the advisory committees brought in and started, I mean, it would probably be good to get it passed now, or does it?
Certainly, the sooner the better. It provides us an opportunity to solicit the community for membership and to solicit applications for board members to review folks in your magisterial districts. You know, the board has had a work session on this, and you've seen it twice in meetings. It's really your pleasure, what you want to do. It's your policy. I will say that our, we're in the process right now of soliciting your current advisory committee membership to continue on a provisional basis until December. And so far, the responses that we've received have been favorable. So, we haven't heard from everybody, but the responses we have received today have been favorable.
So, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know that, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to see if Ms. Sigmund had any comments or questions, and we'll come back.
I don't. I'm actually good with these changes. And I agree with Dr. Chase that, especially because part of this is changing the timeline and asking members to continue on, kind of in the, this kind of gap period between when we would normally approve in the, appoint before school starts to moving it towards a January start. I think it's better now than later.
Ms. Randall? Yep, she's back. We'll get her.
She is on, yes, ma'am. And she would like to say something, but she is having.
No, I was, I'm calling on everybody. Ms. Guy, do you want to go next? I was going to just go down the line and let Ms. Halsted come again after, no, after, Ms. Guy?
Are we voting now?
Well, we're discussing the policy. The motion is to approve it. And Ms. Halsted is raising some questions about whether it should be.
I just didn't know what to do, because it came like right before or whatever. And I don't want anyone thinking that, you know, I didn't, you know, take a look at it or get their questions answered. But I, but I think it's, I think you're all right. We've seen this enough times for us to be able to go forward. But I, but I would also like to extract these questions out, perhaps, at a later date. But there's, some of them.
Saying, if you want to put it in the email to Dr. Taylor.
Or just forward the, if you don't mind, you can forward the email to everybody.
I wasn't sure the right process to do it, but, but I didn't feel right not discussing that either. I mean, I wasn't going to keep it a secret. It just came in a little bit later.
It's for your boy, anyway. Everything anybody sends us is public information.
That's true, too. But I just wanted to make sure. I mean, there, I mean, definitely in scrolling through it and in looking at it, I can see that there's, you know, a lot of like, why this questions in there. So, maybe it's just a matter of clarifying, maybe more of it is just clarifying the language than it is having to change anything around. But I didn't know if we should just go ahead and approve it with that hanging over us, or do we have to stop the whole process? That's really my question.
Yeah. Okay, so Ms. Guy, did that answer your question?
Yes, I'm good and I'm fine to keep going.
Okay, Ms. Randall?
I am ready to go. I think that with the advisories, I appreciate having been personally reached out to and asked if they would be willing to come back and serve. We still have a role to go and find people to fill in slots. I just feel like this is a good timeline for us.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to support this motion, because I think time is of the essence, even though we're talking about this starting in January. We need to get started now. And with school starting next month, that's going to take a lot of the energy and time away. And the sooner we can get started with getting ready for January, the better, as far as I'm concerned. But that having been said, I think if there's questions that, you know, that any member of the public has about this policy, that, you know, those questions or comments, you know, please send them to the board. And if you're comfortable with it, Ms. Halsted, if you want to send that to Ms. Hall, she can, she can share it with the board, and then you can, you know, discuss with Dr. Taylor, getting, getting the answers, or, you know, the answers to the whys. Although, he's pretty busy guy right now, getting ready for, for school as well.
He doesn't have anything to do. He said that the other day, he was bored. No, and I appreciate that, because I feel like, you know, we've been encouraging so much active citizen feedback and comments and stuff. And it looks like these guys really took the time to go through it. And if it's that important to them, then I want to acknowledge that it is and that we've put the time into it. It's just that it just came late. So, so as long as I know it's like daylight, dollar, short, sorry, you're out, then I'm good. Then I feel better.
Okay. Yeah, we just encourage people to, to act fast.
It's summer. Nobody acts fast.
I know, I know. Well, it was hardly summer when it started. It was the spring still.
But it's winter.
All right, let's call for the question. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we got another one. Adoption of proposed amendments to the Student Code of Conduct and related policies/regulations. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion to approve Student Code of Conduct and Related Policies/Regulations.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Randall, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank staff for giving us a great rundown and approval during, overview during the work session this afternoon. It was very informative. And it's clear that our principals and our staff and central office staff have all really been working hard on this.
Ms. Halsted.
I have read and reread and read and reread. I have a few whys left that I'm going to talk to Thomas about myself. But I just want to go on record as saying, some of the, I'm not one of those people that reads stuff pickly like everybody else does, but I thought this was.
I think that would be me.
Right. But like, I'm like, I thought that was a one. So, as long as everything pageinates correctly and there's not multiple fonts, because that's, makes me crazy. But anyway. But I will say, the work session today, I mean, the truth is, there's a big shift coming in the focus of, and I, you know, we were using the word discipline, because it has to be there. But let's just say we're starting out the year hoping that it's, you know, positive first, discipline second. So, fingers crossed. But I have a lot of reading issues.
Okay, Ms. Sigmund.
I can see that, I guess my questions specifically are on the, what's it called? The Acceptable Use Agreement for Electronic and Wireless Devices. I can see by the reviewed and amended, does that mean that that's, this has been a document that's in use? Can I ask when and where? Because we have just graduated a middle school student. She has not had a phone, so I don't know if this would not have come to us, but I don't know how and where parents are supposed to see this. And, yeah, but as a parent in middle school, I don't remember receiving that.
There's typically a.
But as a separate document, a separate signature?
Yes.
Yeah, this typically comes with a.
Roll down.
Maybe because, I mean, we don't have cell phones. So, like, you know, it's just weird that, and maybe that's why I don't remember it, is because we don't, our child doesn't have a cellphone. But, and that's why I'm asking, like, what our procedure is moving forward. Again, her years were COVID years, so paperwork was different during COVID. So.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, this actually brings forward a couple of tweaks that we are making to our practices. This is part of one of the many forms that parents get first week of school. We will be drawing a little bit more special attention to our code of conduct this year in terms of how we deliver it. We are preparing messages for our secondary students, our teachers, and our parents separately, that we'll be preparing some information to go along with this. This will be one of the attachments along with the actual code of conduct itself and the consumable version, which is a little bit more reader-friendly as well, when we start the school year to set the expectations very clearly for everyone else. It is a little bit hard, because our parents at the start of the school year and our students and even our teachers get overwhelmed with a lot of messages. So, we will be front-loading this as one of the messages that goes out before the start of the school year to our families, so that we start off on the right foot. One of the pieces of information that will go out with that message will also be some expectations tied to bus conduct and conduct that's expected on our transportation.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to, that was going to be my follow-up question, is, I don't know if it's potential to add that the cellphone policy is not just in the school buildings, it also includes buses, which isn't explicitly listed here, but maybe in the delivery of the document that we can, you know, include that it is.
Is there a reason why it's not included there, Dr. Taylor?
I might have to get back to you on that.
Yeah, I think that's important, because it's always been the, certainly the practice that it applied on the buses as well. And if that's something that we need to put in there, can we include as part of our motion that Dr. Taylor can add that in?
Sure, but I don't know how it would be enforced.
I didn't know it was on buses.
I think it.
I thought it was only.
Seventy-seven students and a bus driver looking at the road. There's no way to enforce that.
Was cell phones on buses?
But there's cameras there.
Dr. Nichols, were cell phones?
I would recommend, Madam Chair, that the board, because it is before the start of the school year, that you do move forward with adoption as is. And if necessary, you make an amendment later, or it's your next opportunity to make an amendment after we do a little bit of fact-finding for you. Then the board will next meet the day before school starts. So, for business.
What's the day school starts for the?
Transition day.
Transition day.
Sixth graders and ninth graders, yes, it will be the day that school starts. So, that might give us a little bit, a little bit of time. So, if we need to make a tweak, we can certainly do that. But in the meantime, I would recommend that.
Okay, so it wasn't intentionally omitted, then?
It doesn't appear that way at this time.
Can I have one more, one more tweet?
We'll get Ms. Sigmund, then we'll go down the line.
And that I, just, in addition to buses, I see that it says, using the device during the school day, during PE or CTE locker room time. But I do also have concerns about student functions, student activities, sports teams. Any locker room use, as far as I'm concerned, should have no cell phones, not just for PE and CTE.
That's always been an issue as well, because we do not want any cameras in the locker rooms.
Well, and I think that part of that, the use policy too, right, says not that it can't be used for filming or pictures in the bathroom or whatever.
Well, it says during the school day for the remainder, you know, so.
Well.
Let's put that on the review for that.
And I'd just like to note that we normally get this earlier. Like, this is the latest I remember getting the Student Code. Like this is the latest I remember getting the student code of conduct for approval. So normally we're getting it. Yeah, yeah. Well, normally we're getting in like May or something like that.
But we have some pretty significant, um, changes this year. So that's one, you know, one reason. So this is, this is a good start. If there's any other points that we need to, um, I know, um, you know, address, we can catch a minute amendment. And we're not obligated to wait a cycle for an amendment. We could, you know, do it at any time. Of course, it would come two times for information and then for action, um, to the board. I want to, um, go through the board here and Ms. Guy, we'll catch you after we, um, do this unless you want to chime in now. Oh, okay. Well, you just let us know when, when she's back. All right. Ms. Randall?
Um, I just appreciate having, uh, the device, um, uh, for the middle school and being allowed to have the kids back in lockers, um, with their backpacks, not in the classrooms. That was sort of a mess this year, um, uh, from teachers' perspectives. Having the middle school backpacks and not having the kids in lockers gave them, uh, is a little more immature with the cellphone use. It kind of took it away when they were able to put their backpacks in the lockers with their cell phones. So I'm delighted to have that back. So, thank you.
Ms. Halsted.
Um, I just had one question too about the, um, cellphone, the cellphone use. And it's not really more so the policy, it is really the implementation of making sure that sort of every classroom takes that cellphone or does whatever is supposed to be done with it. Because, I mean, we're really at that point like we were talking about today. And this is one of those things, I think if it's one teacher doesn't do it, then we're really going to be hitting, it's going to be really hard to enforce it. And it has to, it has to be.
So that, that is always the dilemma with policy.
Right.
And the lever that the board can, can pull is, is one to, to make the legislation, but the enforcement and the implementation, that's on us.
Did I get to make a law? No, I'm just kidding.
Dr. Taylor, does that mean it's going to be enforced uniformly in every one of our schools?
That's our plan.
That's a great, um, that's a great plan. Because, you know, we've heard from some teachers that, you know, some teachers want to be, um, more lenient or be, be friends and, you know, be the, you know, the, the good person and let students use the cell phones during their classes. And then other teachers are enforcing. So it just makes it doubly hard for the teachers that are enforcing the policy to, um, you know, make it effective. So that's, that's really good news. And I, I think teachers, uh, generally will appreciate that this is going to be uniformly enforced. It doesn't matter what school you're in or what class you're in or, or, or who you have for, for, for a teacher. So thank you. All right. All in favor of the motion to approve this, uh, policy? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Eight seventeen. We have, uh, two things left on the agenda. The superintendent's reports and comments and board member comments. So you're on, Dr. Taylor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just want to take a, a couple of seconds to thank, uh, our teachers and families. I hope are enjoying a, a summer break and getting a little bit of family time. Our summer programs, uh, still press on. And I want to thank our families and teachers who've been participating in those as well. Uh, we still do have vacancies in Stafford County public schools, although we have filled more of our vacancies than many of our neighbors. Uh, we do, do still have some critical vacancies and would encourage folks who have an interest in, uh, teaching to join Team Stafford. Uh, we are at a pretty fantastic place. And as a school division, we welcome folks to, to join our team. And since you passed the policy, I can now proudly say, we would also like to invite you to join an advisory committee to the board. Uh, we will be soliciting nominations at the end of the month and into August, uh, for nominations to join our advisory committee as well throughout the fall. Um, it's hard to believe, but we have just two weeks until our new teachers join us for our Prep for Success Week uh, at the end of July, uh, where we'll be welcoming our new teachers to Team Stafford in grand fashion. Uh, and we really look forward to that week of learning as we prepare our teachers for success. Uh, I would like to also, uh, recognize that there was a change in our calendar. And you've heard, uh, the school board talk about this quite a bit. And we'll be ramping up some of our social media announcements and also promulgating, uh, some more information about transition day. But our kindergartners, sixth graders and ninth graders, uh, will be going to school on August, uh, eighth. Uh, excuse me, August ninth, I apologize. August ninth, uh, Tuesday, August ninth, uh, which will be one day before all of our other students. Uh, the transition to a new school is tough. There are new teachers, new friends, new expectations and a new school layout. And those challenges are sometimes very difficult for some of our students to make. And we want to teach our, our newest students in each of our school buildings uh, how to, uh, operate within the school very well and be, have a very successful first start. Um, we have a couple of things that, that I want to share in terms of a quick couple of events that are coming up. Our final mobile enrollment is next Tuesday at Conway Elementary School in the morning from eight AM to noon. Uh, more than seventy percent of our projected kindergarten students have already registered. So we have still, uh, several kindergartners that we're expecting to see. If you miss one of our mobile enrollment, uh, uh, centers, that's fine. Uh, please come and visit your zoned elementary school or any elementary school. And we'll help you find, uh, out where you're supposed to register your five-year-old for school. We look forward to, uh, welcoming those students into Stafford County public schools. And finally, I'll close with our annual collect for kids. Uh, uh, supply drive is underway right now. Uh, there's a lot of activities that are like a fill the bus, uh, activities. And we have our, our community collect for kids going on right now. Uh, there are drop-off sites throughout the county for physical supply donations. And there's an Amazon list if you'd like to make a digital donation. Uh, information can be found on our website and we are collecting through August one. We need about a hu- a thousand backpacks this year. Um, and that's about a thousand students that we're going to serve. And we're going to pack those backpacks full of great school supplies and get those kids off to a great start. So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board. It's a pleasure to serve.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Ms. Halsted.
I'm going to be.
You're up next.
No, I'm just kidding. Um, I'm just kidding. No, I am. I, um, so.
You're kidding.
I'm kidding. So it's been, it's been exciting. Um, the governance, I had my first governance meeting yesterday. Thanks for your patience. Um, they made me chair and didn't give me a gavel, but that's all right. Um, it's okay. I expect to be having fun and exciting things happen. Um, so that's, oh, thanks. Anyway, um, I don't need it. But anyway, uh, just a couple of things before school's getting on. I can't believe it's coming up either. But, um, I, you know, again, we're talking about the code of conduct and, and the changes that are coming down the pike. And some of them are going to feel heavy and maybe burdensome in the beginning. But I, I can't help but feel that there's really going to be some positivity coming out on the back. I'm hoping that this really alleviates some of the burden from the teachers. And I think just as we get through this and we really start to get our feet wet, I'm hoping we can, it won't be so much like swimming upstream. Um, I want to make, I don't know if it's a request, a suggestion or, uh, whatever. But, um, if parents can hold off, um, the first couple of weeks, um, from bashing each other on social media over who cut them off in the parking lot to, you know, all the way through, I think that would go a long way. Because we tend to complain very much the first couple of weeks of school. So I'm going to put a challenge out there, myself included, to not complain about the little things the first few weeks. How about that? Like just weeks. Let everybody get themselves up and running. Shake off some of the dust. There's a lot of new things coming. And so a lot of times if we're going to ask to start things off positively, then we also need a lot of, we should have some more positive stuff out on social media, not just Stafford County schools, but out on Stafford Talk and Stafford Moms and the nine thousand other Stafford places that there are to go and complain online. Um, and that's just my challenge to some of the people who are more, um, otherwise inclined. Um, the other part of that is I met with, um, one of my elementary schools. For me with the other, I've scheduled all my meetings for, before the kickoff of the week to kind of hopefully get into my school's Colonial Forge on down. Um, during that first week when the new teachers are there, hopefully I can meet them and see what their, what their plans are. And maybe by the time the next three years is up, they'll still be there. No. Um, I'm excited for, for what's up and coming and I hope everyone else is too. But, but I think change is painful and I just think we need to all keep that in mind. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. Ms. Randall?
Um, I'm also very excited that our teachers actually get a full summer to rest, relax and renew. I would also like to remind, though, when they are resting and relaxing, renewing, that they maybe take the time to find one thing that is good and specific for them. Whether it be, um, uh, you know, a meatless Monday or going to the farmer's market and making your meal around the things that you find there or drinking more water. Or the one that I absolutely am horrible at is going to bed. Um, I just, I struggle with that and I hope teachers maybe find an opportunity to get some self-care for themselves. Um, because as we take care of ourself, we also need to remember that we have to put our own oxygen mask on first, find something for ourselves before we can take care of others. And their big responsibility is our kids coming back. But also we have opportunities as community members to work in donating things for backpacks or donating things for our new teachers or opportunities, um, you know, to join our PTAs, to join our other groups at our schools that give us opportunities as community members to support our teachers, our staff and of course, our students. So, um, I hope as we count our time down this summer, that, uh, everybody finds something to get outside and enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sigmund.
Uh, Mr. Fulmer, uh, took a little bit of my thunder, but we, uh, did have our first budget committee meeting as well. Um, with our new membership, I'm grateful for the opportunity to service chair and I'm really excited to work with Ms. Guy as vice chair. Uh, Mr. Fulmer said, we got the updated school budget. It's re- our state budget. It's very favorable for us, which is really exciting. Um, glad that we're getting, being able to prioritize bonuses for our staff. Uh, they're providing us with, you know, almost nine million additional dollars for construction projects. As you can imagine, our needs exceed that, but we as a committee and as a board are really, really committed to making sure that all of our needs, our school needs are met to the greatest extent. I was also really excited to learn about the proposed budget calendar. That's in the consent agenda as an attachment. It's a lot more progressive than we've had in the past. And I think that's great as we work with our counterparts across the street to make sure our schools are appropriately funded. Um, as for stuff that's been going on, our kid, my kids had a great time and a great summer learning adventure at the first shift. I guess there's a second shift that's happening now or soon. Uh, I was really grateful for the opportunity to have my little kids, the fourth, rising fourth graders and sixth graders back in school for a few days to kind of reinforce some of what was, um, stopped in May. Uh, and to be with their friends and their teachers. Uh, want to thank again Moms for Liberty for having me out to hear about their concerns. Uh, kind of a reflect on the past year and their hopes and dreams for years to come. I loved the first annual bandy day. I still want to see Mr. Fulmer here on a Tuesday night in his suit, um, which was like Stars and Stripes extravaganza. It was fantastic. Uh, uh, with Dr. Warner, we toured the Heather M. Field Day Schools, school here in Stafford County. We provide for our students who have some, um, unique and specialized learning needs. Some, some of our, uh, I think the first thing I said when I walked in is where's the playground? And I'm very disappointed to learn that we do have a stu- school in our system that serves our youngest learners that does not have a play structure of any sort, let alone one that's appropriate for children with developmental and physical challenges. Um, so that is, upon learning that, that has become a high priority for me uh, to see if we can rectify that for them. Uh, want to thank Ms. Halsted for having our town hall last month. That was fun. Um, and I also wanted to share a kind of unique experience that I had today. Uh, a young man at Winding Creek Elementary did an independent study project on his love for Ferraris. And it had the display board and some, um, models that he built and he did a lot of work. And a company that does, uh, exotic car driving experiences in the greater Fredericksburg area learned about his love of Ferraris and reached out and invited him to come and ride at a hundred and thirty miles an hour around Dominion Racetrack today.
Wow.
Um, and literally get hands-on with a Ferrari. And it just, and I was able to go there today. I will not go in those cars, but, um, he had a fantastic time. And it just makes me realize that so many of us as adults do really cool things, either in our free time and our day jobs, that our kids, like, they don't even, like, this kid now figured out that he could have a job teaching other people to drive Ferraris and travel the country doing it. So, uh, you know, if you have a cool job or a job you think is cool, there's probably a kid in our school who would think so too. If you do something fun on the weekends, like, figure out a way to share it. Because that's how kids are inspired to continue to low, learn and grow and, you know, kind of see school, school as a path to being able to do cool and fun things as a grown-up rather than just a place they go every day. So that's it.
Thank you. Uh, is Ms. Guy with us? Okay, all right. Weather intervention. Dr. Chase?
So yeah, uh, summer tends to be my opportunity to sort of catch up on sometimes what I can't get done during the school year. So, um, every summer I try and meet with the principals of all the schools, children living in my district or zone to attend. And so since the end of the school year, I've met with principals at Hartwood, Rocky Run, Grafton, Conway, elementaries, Dixon Smith, Drew and Gale Middle Schools. Um, and then I met with the principals of Stafford and Colonial Forge High School. And I will be meeting with the principal of Falmouth Elementary next week. So, um, as usual, I'm very impressed with school leadership in Stafford County. Uh, principals were welcoming. Their dedication to their students is front and center. Um, and I'm always so impressed with the thoughtfulness with which they answer my questions and their knowledge about students and education. Um, for example, at a recent board meeting, a board member asked about social promotions. It had not occurred to me that this was a big issue in our schools. Um, but I really never thought about it. So, um, I asked principals about it and I was very impressed with their knowledge of the research on the topic and how carefully they consider whether or not to hold a student back a grade level. Um, in fact, Nick Roman at Rocky Run, uh, pulled out light's retention scale and showed me the actual variables that are used to make this very difficult and, and really very important decision. Um, all the middle school principals express concern about the schedule change and its possible negative effect on transportation for middle school. Um, so we all have our fingers crossed that that's going to work out okay. Most of the schools serving students living in the Falmouth District are either fully staffed in terms of teachers or very close to it. Um, principals sang the praises of Mr. Burnett and Human Resources. Um, we have been fortunate to hire a number of teachers from the county to our south. And we also had, um, a number of teachers put in for transfers from the northern end of the county to the southern end to avoid any transportation headaches resulting from the schedule change. So we're looking pretty good down here in the, the southern end of the county. Um, I asked principals about their experiences with Dr. Taylor's Central Office Ambassador Program. Um, principals had a lot of positive things to share about the program. And, um, I was really impressed with how cleverly principals use their ambassadors. Um, they paid attention to people's skills and seemed to take advantage of those skills. Um, so finally, principals were really happy to have a full-length summer this year. And I hope they all and all of our staff are getting a very much, uh, break this summer. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Sounds like you've been busy.
I have been.
Well, I, I'm looking forward to the start of school. That's when I get to visit all my schools. My challenges, the first day of school, just for, for a quick stop by. Dr. Stembel, I always kept him for last because he gave me a great tour and brought me up to speed on, you know, all the new developments at, at Mountain View. So I'll have to ask you to introduce me to the new principal, um, which will be, you know, a familiar face as well. But I'm, I, I want to, um, thank Dr. Taylor and Dr. Jones and, you know, your, your staff for the, the, the presentations at the work session. And I want to thank the board for a very, um, you know, good discussion. And I think we brought up a lot of points, um, you know, to, to think about. And I think we got a lot of questions answered. So I, you know, I'm, I'm very, um, positive about, you know, at the start of our, our new meeting schedule. Um, you know, our, our work sessions are certainly open to the public. They're televised. Um, but they're also more informal and I think they give us a better chance to, to interact. Um, you know, when we're not sitting side by side, we can, you know, see each other face to face and, and, and have, you know, some, some really good, good discussions. So, um, and, and I'm also very, um, to face and have, you know, some really good discussions, so, and I'm also very, very encouraged by the approach we're going to take to the student code of conduct, and I appreciate Ms. Halsted's, you know, comments, and everyone else's as well, that we're looking at this as a positive thing, but we are also going to be holding the students, the parents, accountable for their conduct, because we can't afford to have disruptions in the classroom. You know, we can't afford that, we talked about learning loss today, we have a lot to make up, and we have to use every minute that's available, and we can't expend our teachers' energy, you know, on trying to, trying to deal with behaviors that are not conducive to learning. So, this is, this is going to be the positive approach, but I think that people need to understand that there are consequences, they will be, you know, according to the situation, and, you know, take a look at the new code of conduct, encourage everyone to read it, read it closely, and see where we're going, and also, I am so, so happy to hear that this is going to be enforced uniformly across the schools. Now, taking into consideration, you know, certain circumstances, but we're not going to have a difference between one school and another school. There may be differences among, you know, particular students or classes of students, you know, based on certain criteria, but you're not going to have one standard in one school and another one somewhere else, because if I've heard one complaint, it's that it's not the same in every school. It used to be, I mean, I'm talking maybe fifteen years ago, it was the dress code. You know, we had a different dress code, depending on what school you were in, what you could wear, and then we had a committee put together, they put together dress code, and then it was across the board. So, I'm looking at this student conduct as something that we are going to address, it's going to be positive, and most importantly, it's going to give the teachers the tools they need to have management in their classroom. And that's, that's really important at Ms. Halsted's town hall, we had a number of teachers come, and I heard them when they said, "I feel powerless, because if I have misconduct in my class, there's nothing I can do." I send the child to the administration, and they get sent back. Now, this is not across the board, but, you know, it's in, you know, some places, so we're not going to have that now. We're going to, we're going to have a student code of conduct, people are going to know what it is, parents are going to understand it, and I would ask the parents to support the schools, support the teachers, in making sure that the students understand, you know, what the, what the expectations and the requirements are for behavior. So, thank you for the good presentation, and I look forward to, you know, getting reports next year that are very boring, with not much to report. So, that brings us to a close, other than the announcement of our next school board meetings, we just set a work session for July twenty-sixth at six o'clock, which will be at Colonial Forge High School in the library, and that work session agenda will be out before the meeting, there's a number of items that we're going to address, including the strategic plan, the board's self-evaluation, a general discussion on the approach for the clerk's evaluation, and what else was there, Ms. Randall, was there something else?
The recommendations from the advisory committee.
Oh, the advisory committees, of course, we talked about that earlier today with the special ed committee. So, that'll be July twenty-sixth, six o'clock, Colonial Forge High School Library, and then our next business meeting, and another work session, will be on Tuesday, August ninth, which is the transitional first day of school. So, thank you very much, we are done, eight thirty-eight.